Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board meeting for Monday, November 4th. And I would ask Amy to call the roll, please.
Roger Dupree?
Here.
Mark Roy?
Here.
Michael Marcott?
Present.
Lucy Bisson?
Present.
Alex Pine?
Here.
Penthea Burns?
Here.
And Amy Smith, here. Okay. And for staff, Jonathan Connors, the director of planning and co enforcement, Shelley Norton, deputy director, city planner, and Craig Tebow, city planner. Okay. So... Yes. So this evening, because Ms. Cox is not here, Penthea will be a voting member if we have any votes. I'm not sure if we'll be voting on anything, but, okay. And, good evening, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening.
And do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, we don't.
And correspondence, I see we have an email from Lisa Jones?
Yes.
That you sent us this afternoon and printed for us this evening?
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings and we have other business. We have a workshop for continued discussion of ordinance amendments to change the locations where a homeless shelter is allowed, including changes to Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two definitions, Article Three official map, Article Four establishment of districts, Article 10 conditional uses, Article N, okay, and Article 11 district regulations. The board will be accepting public comment at this topic of the meeting. And so where would you, how would you like to proceed, Shelley? Or Craig, or John, whomever wishes to speak to us.
Sure, so since your last meeting, staff has put together an interactive map, which you see up on the wall. The map shows in pink a 500-foot buffer from daycare locations, in blue, a 500-foot buffer from the parcel edges of schools, in green, 500-foot from parks, and then in yellow, 500 feet from the, basically the right-of-way edge of the corridor. So what we did was we used the center line of the road and we went 525 feet and assumed an average of a 50-foot wide road right-of-way, just for discussion purposes. So what you're seeing can be zoomed out, so you can see the whole city, and we can zoom in quite close. There's also an aerial photo that we can turn on and off if you want that instead of the gray map. So we have that for use as an interactive map. We also have printed copies, and then also the current overlay district for homeless shelters is also available to toggle on and off on that map, so you can see how that relates to the buffers. So I believe those were the buffers we discussed last time that the board was entrusted in exploring or looking at, so we have that for you to look at tonight. And then the other thing that we've put together, which we just handed out this evening, so you can discuss this evening, or it can be something you take home and discuss at the next meeting, but we did pull together the definition of homeless shelter from the zoning and land use code and no-barrier shelter, the prior definitions in the business licensing, the newly approved definitions from the council, which essentially takes the homeless shelter definition out of the zoning and land use code, because it used to just reference the zoning and land use code. Now it's pulled that definition into the business licensing and amended it significantly. And then we've also pulled together a couple of definitions from the state and federal, which we weren't really finding, it was mostly definitions of homelessness, not definitions of a shelter, but we provided that as well. So that's what we have pulled together for this evening, and, you know, we're taking the lead from the board, I guess, at this point for how you want to proceed.
Would you put the overlay on just so that we can see it? Yeah, can you go out just over, yeah, there we go. Okay. So I will turn it to the board, and where do you want to go from here?
Are there any shelters outside of the overlay, downtown overlay?
So this map does not show current shelter locations, so I'm not familiar enough with their locations, I believe.
You've got one on the corner of Lincoln and Cedar. And then you've got, you've got St. Martin's, which is Bartlett and College.
But that was considered downtown anyways.
Right, but I'm just thinking, trying to think of where, what other shelters. We've got New Beginnings, which is on College, isn't it?
Yeah, so it looks like the one on Cedar and Lincoln is just outside of...
And then there's, where else, which other one?
New Beginnings, Penthea brought...
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Isn't that on College Street?
There's College, and there's also one on Main Street.
Oh, there's one on Main Street, okay, okay.
One, I think, is a group facility and one is a shelter, right?
Right, I think so.
They're both within the current overlay.
They're both within the current overlay, so they're, they're fine.
Yeah.
And they're, they're existing anyway, so...
Effect existing, this is just some new shelters, yeah.
No, I'm just kind of curious, so. Gentlemen, ladies, Michael?
I guess I need some sort of bearing in just to, what you're just saying. I was trying to take notes as I heard the shelter locations, and I think I heard four, and I only got three down. So what were they again?
There's, there's St. Martin de Porres at College and Bartlett. You've got the one on the corner of Cedar and Lincoln.
Yeah.
I can't remember the name. And then you've got New Beginnings, you've got one on Main Street and one on College.
Oh, okay, so there are two New Beginnings.
There are two New Beginnings.
Okay.
And, and I know there's some, there's another one. There's also...
Sheltered by Jesus, is that the one?
I'm sorry?
Sheltered by Jesus, is that?
No, it's St. Martin de Porres is, is...
There's another one on Pine Street, like at Pine and Pierce.
Okay.
Still downtown, so...
Right, still downtown.
It's a shelter?
Right, I'm not sure about, but, and then there's, there's St. Martin de Porres, the, the women's one, it's St. Catherine's, I think it is. That's on the corner of, is that Five Corners?
Okay, Five Corners.
You know, Sabatus, Sabatus and Webster Ash.
That's St. Catherine's.
I think it's called St. Catherine's. It's, it's the female version of Bart, St. Martin's.
Of St. Martin's, okay.
Okay, it's the same group, but they finally opened a one for women in that big white house on the corner.
So I'm up to a count of six, and all but one, Hope Haven, is not in the downtown overlay? Is that what I'm hearing?
Downtown overlay, does that count, it covers Lincoln, doesn't it?
I heard, I heard downtown, but I don't know if it was just downtown or downtown overlay.
Yeah, the overlay doesn't, doesn't cover Lincoln Street.
It doesn't go down as far as Lincoln Street, no.
So you can see it right there, the turquoise is, is the overlay, and Lincoln is down in the green bubble.
So I guess to just get our bearings here, we asked for this map in the last meeting with the idea that, you know, there's thoughts from the council of either removing or substantially changing the existing overlay district. And I think as one of the people asking for the map, the idea was to sort of look at, well, if we did want to have a more expansive set of areas where shelters could be, you know, how does the overlay compare to doing more of a buffer-based model? That was one thing. And I think we did have a request to try and get some of the existing shelters on there because many of the members on the board brought up that, you know, there's a lot of sort of shelter or shelter-like facilities that do not impact their, you know, their neighborhoods that they're in, and, and, you know, do a pretty good job of, you know, managing any traffic or any of those types of concerns. So I think from what I remember us saying, we, we kind of wanted to talk more about scale of the shelter, right? Because when we talk about a shelter, there's, you know, a big difference between eight beds and 100 beds, and the population that that shelter is serving. And then fold that discussion into talking about placement within the city bounds and, you know, what, what makes sense. I know one sort of thought that came up was talking about doing this on a contract basis, so basically everything, all the projects come in and get reviewed by the planning board for approval. And I think there were some concerns around that, that Shanna brought up of, well, if we want folks to do this, we do have to give them some certainty for their project, so we're not just sort of like, you know, come, come play 20 questions with us.
Yeah, and then we'll send you home for another 20 questions.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think what we're hopefully going to try and work on tonight is that comparison, and then I think also scale, you know, and how we want to maybe put some bounds on that conditional use permitting process that address, you know, the differences in scale and how we want to treat that, but then also just give some general outline to folks about how they would approach a project like this and what they can expect, you know, in terms of places that are likely to succeed or places that are just non-starters. So I hope that was a good enough recap. That was from memory, I did not prep this one, so happy to be corrected.
So my, you know, my understanding is that the city council would like us to remove, would like to remove the overlay, correct?
Correct.
And just go with, with boundaries and that kind of thing. So can we take the overlay out and put the, you know, the other map back on with all So, and that's, that's the same map that's on the table, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, you know, if we remove the overlay, that allows, you know, and, and we change the language to a conditional use, like Alex was saying, what other restrictions, what restrictions can we put in the conditional use?
So...
So that we can be restrictive, but without, you know, restricting too much?
Yeah.
Well, you know, to, to be able to say, okay, if you're in a residential neighborhood, this is, this is what you can, you can do. If you're in a commercial, more commercial area, then this is what you can possibly do.
So, look, looking at this, you know, if we toggle back and forth between these two views, one thing that, that sort of pops into my head when I look at it, you know, this, this was built with this assumption that, you know, if we went for conditional use, we would maybe say, okay, well, we want a buffer from these certain types of facilities, and then stuff outside the buffer would be areas that are eligible. And if, I think if you look at this, a lot of the areas that are currently within the shelter overlay district as a permitted area would actually not be permitted if we were to go with these types of buffers, you know? And looking at it here, I think it's, you know, what's really driving that is childcare facilities and parks, right? I think that's what, what's driving most of this.
What's the, what's the green again? Could you tell me that, so I can put...
Yeah, so green is parks, the blue is schools, and pink is childcare.
Madam Chair, would it, would it be helpful if we started with, with each one of these individual items and kind of go from there?
Sure.
Look, look what the buffers are from schools and daycares solely, and then, and just move on from there and kind of get the board to talk about each one of those buffers to see if it's a buffer they want or a buffer that they don't want.
Yep.
A lot of them are duplicative, duplicative as well, like the parks and schools.
Yes, Michael?
Can you remind me what the yellow is?
Yellow is the, the...
The three corridors and the East Avenue corridor.
Corridors, okay. And just to come back, because I can see this being channeled down, the idea of buffers, I think I made it clear last meeting, and maybe more than one board member, we're really interested in expanding this to neighborhoods, NCA, NCB, and so, so on, so forth. I see that simply lifting the current overlay is opening that door widely. And part of the discussion at the last meeting had in the direction of, in light of that, that we wanted definitions of shelters. And I heard earlier in this discussion how the material in front of us is definitions of homelessness, not definitions of shelters. A little concerning, because that's probably where we should have been tonight, definition of shelters, if there would be any consideration of moving out into neighborhoods.
Well, there is a, a, there is a definition of shelters in that, on the front page of the other, the other documents.
But that's...
But, but maybe not in the characterization that I'm referring to, because I did take a quick read of this when I came in.
This is, this is the city council's definition?
Yeah, it, it's a definition of shelters and no-barrier shelters.
Right.
But what we were discussing last week was the difference between a family shelter, a shelter for children, a shelter for people who have substance abuse issues and mental health issues.
Yeah, but I think that should be in licensing, not in, in planning.
Well, then, then it becomes very simple. I will not make a recommendation to lift the current overlay.
Okay.
So if I could, if I could just add some, some clarity here, I think, I'm remembering what you were talking about, Michael, in terms of concerns around this. I think we went down the path of asking about different definitions given by other entities around types of homeless shelters, because we did talk about, you know, certain shelter activities that are, exist in the city that are lower impact, that are fine on a community. I think you even brought one up, one of the, the homes, a group home for...
Well, it was a group, it wasn't a shelter, it's a...
Yeah.
Group, group home for possibly developmentally challenged people?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but as an example of, you know, here's something that, that didn't impact the neighborhood that it was in.
And it didn't impact the neighborhood because of the nature of it, and what I was driving at at the last meeting was maybe a family shelter or shelter for youth would not have the same kind of impact as a no-barrier shelter for anybody, any classification. That's a serious concern.
Yeah.
And part of the discussion that didn't occur last week, because I figured it would come up during the process, is we, we start locating shelters out in neighborhoods, we're going to impact the livability in this community, the tax base in this community. We already have an issue with flight in this community. Well, we, we don't need to be encouraging more flight, property values, being depressed, et cetera. That, that's a huge concern. And when I asked last week that, and I think I made it clear that I wasn't interested in really going out into the neighborhoods, the NCA's and NCBs and NP's, as we created within the last couple of years, I, I have a serious concern with where this is going. And unless we define the types of, and groups of, and that was part of the vocabulary at the last meeting, types of and groups of shelters. And again, disappointed that that didn't get defined in the interim, to be in front of us tonight, because that's the only way that I'm going to consider voting in favor of lifting the current overlay, which is what was, we were facing in the first place. We, we could have had a vote, but we compromised, you know, we got into a little bit of discussion, trying to find the right adjective in front of that word, but we, we moved along instead of coming to a hard conclusion at the last meeting, up or down on the overlay. And that was the only way that I was willing to move forward.
Okay.
So, just to finish my thought here, and I think we got into the discussion around definitions, so that if we were to rewrite the ordinance, you know, based on scale for a conditional use model or for any model, really, that we'd be using definitions that are used by other organizations. So if you're going to build a shelter in the community, you know, what we're saying lines up with what you're either trying to build or provide, and, and sort of matches up with what, you know, that field already uses to describe their basic forms of shelter that, that they're providing, the basic categories of it. And it sounds like you weren't able to direct it, staff, you weren't able to find anything from federal or state resources on that. Like, they don't really, they don't really go out to define that information. They're, they're more just sort of like, this is what homelessness is in terms of how we provide funding, and we'll let the organizations that are taking the funding figure the rest out. Is that sort of a fair characterization?
Very fair. I'm going to let Deputy Director Norton take the role here, take the lead. She, she had reached out, she took the, the, the advice of the board and, and reached out to the known shelter operators within the city, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy, but I don't think she got any responses.
Yeah.
And she, she's done some legwork on it, and I'll let her speak to that.
Yeah, so, so I had reached out to ask them if they could point us towards any state kind of sized definitions, if you will, or categorization, and I did not receive any responses from anyone, so that was over a week ago. We did look for definitions, which is what you have in front of you. Staff hasn't reached out to kind of do further research, and we can certainly do that prior to another meeting. Our thought was that, that we were directed to have a workshop on the overlay itself and figuring out the where, which is kind of what we were envisioning would be happening tonight, and then with further guidance, we can certainly provide more information. I'm not sure, I think with a little more guidance, it would be helpful to understand exactly what we're looking for. There are certainly communities that have like small, medium, large shelters, but I'm not sure how much looking at what some other community has done is helpful. I think there's a lot to be said for the board, really, considering what do you envision in a neighborhood and what's appropriate, and where would something bigger go? I mean, I think that's really a discussion for wrestling with.
Roger?
Did any of the staff attend the meeting, the city council, as to the reason why they wanted to lift or have us remove the overlay?
Yeah, so there's, there were a couple of meetings, and in re-listening to that, I don't know as there was a specific reason given, but there were multiple members of the board who were open to having either no restrictions or limited restrictions, and we were definitely given guidance that the desire was to invert, if you will, the regulations. So instead of only this area can you do it, more of a, you can do it in all of these areas, except possibly, you know, next to a daycare or something like that. So we were given guidance that if the board had some buffers that you thought were, that you have thought out and, and have a good reason for asking for, that the council would be very open to that. But there was definitely a desire to see a much broader area than currently is. And I know Director Connor has been in more of the meetings than I have as well, so if you have anything to add.
Yeah, Director, Deputy Director Norton kind of hit the nail on the head. So it, it runs the gamut, right? We can't get into the mind of each one of the counselors, but, you know, what they have said on the dais is, is just what she said, they, they would like to see it, you know, not restricted. They, they want you folks in zoning to, to do the restrictions, either through buffers or, you know, conditional use permits. So they, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for them, but that's just what we've heard at the council meetings, if you, if you've watched any of them on YouTube. Not, not a great deal of, of reasoning behind it, but this is, that's what they've, they've asked for.
Okay, yes, Mark?
So the definition in the zoning and land use code is now different than the definition in the chapter 22?
Yep.
Are they looking, was the council intending for us to amend the land use code?
Yeah, yep.
To match theirs?
Yes, so there would be, the, the thought from the council was that the zoning and land use code really wouldn't define it, that it would, it would be the licensing that would. Although I think if there were something that came in as far as like giving shelters different size categories or something like that, as far as not licensing but for zoning, you know, in districts A, B, and C, shelters of X beds or fewer are allowed, in D, E, and F, you know, shelters of this many beds are allowed. That, that's a zoning regulation, that's unrelated to licensing, and that makes sense. So I think that there would be an opportunity for definitions in the shelter, for shelters in, in our zoning and land use code to make sense from a zoning perspective.
So does the staff believe that it's inappropriate to have a homeless shelter definition in the zoning and land use code?
No, I don't think that there's a preference, it's just previously, the zoning and land use code defined it, and the licensing referred directly back to that definition and didn't have a definition. They're, they're kind of looking to flip that and have the definition be in the licensing.
Okay.
But it makes sense potentially if you want to provide greater, you know, specificity of what's allowed in which districts, or if it's residential district or commercial district, that you guys would also have a layer of definition.
So eventually this, this definition will go away from the zen, zoning and land use code. Who controls that? Do we control that, or does the council control that?
Yes and yes. So you'll make a recommendation on that as part of, so, so the kind of next steps after you're done workshopping, whether it's tonight or whether it's after another meeting, would be that we'll come back with redlined versions of the ordinance and potentially an update to the map for this board to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to council on. And then the council has two readings, and, and they, they actually enact it.
So then can we use this workshop to simply address Mr. Marcott's concern, which is, look, if their definition of a homeless shelter is now essentially gutted and allows for basically anybody to, to be anywhere, can, why don't we just use this workshop to say, okay, well, if we're going to use that licensing definition as a homeless shelter, then a homeless shelter that is within this district with, or within this zone, meaning this size or, or resident number, that's allowed, not allowed? Why don't we just do that tonight?
So some context for this. The desire to move away from, like, okay, maybe I should back up. The definition that is in the land use code right now came about, about the same time or concurrent with the...
Overlay.
The overlay, right? And when you read that definition, and various members on, on the board brought this up, I was one of them, it, it included a lot of things about how the facility operates, what the plans are and things like that, that aren't really building-related or location-related. And so I think in our last meeting, we sent a request back to the council to, or to staff or, or something, or am I misremembering this? But basically, we were, we were looking to have that language moved, so not necessarily removed from all code, but moved out of the building and land use code over into licensing. So the things that covered more operational things moved over, we asked to move over to licensing, and, you know, definitions that have to do with size, density, build form, those still reside in planning. So absolutely, we should, that, I think is one of the goals that we had for the workshop tonight, is figuring out what, what sort of the land use...
Do we want to allow?
Scheme. Is it, is it just sticking with this? Is it something new? Is it a little bit of both? And then what do we need to write in there in terms of definitions that have to do specifically with buildings and size and scale that, that make sense here? So, it sounds like we don't really have necessarily a model that we can work with from other entities in terms of what sizes are, so that, that means we sort of have to come up with it.
Right.
Ourselves. And what we talked about in the last meeting, or what came up a lot as a, as a theme for feedback, was that we already look at various housing types, 'cause fundamentally, that's what a homeless shelter is, it's just short-term housing for folks, right? And we've looked at that usage for other, or sort of similar, similar situations, multiple people in a building, for other uses, and we've developed restrictions based on that. And so maybe we could start to use those as a foundation for what we want to talk about here. But I think before we even get into that, we kind of want to break down exactly what we mean by small, medium, and large, and then we can start to sort of layer things on top of that. And I think that's where you were going.
Yeah, right.
But I, I just wanted to provide that extra context of history around how we sort of ended up here.
I, I think it's pretty easy to come up with some, you know, rough outlines of what we want.
Right, and, and there, you know, staff is gonna do the actual language. We don't need to, to-
You don't need to write-
You know, get down into the, into the weeds. We need to say, okay, uh, and I'll get to you, Roger, in a second. Uh, you know, if we have a, a small family shelter, well, it's, it, there is a definition in here, it's an individual with, you know, one, one individual with, with children or something to that effect. And, and then, you know, and that, that can be allowed in, in NCA, NCB, that kind of stuff. I, I'm just saying that, that's the kind of thing that we, we can do, I think. Roger?
I think the first order of business that we have to look at is whether or not we're gonna lift the overlay or leave it as it is.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And-
Yep.
My preference going along with Michael is that if you lift the overlay, you're opening the door for anybody to put a homeless shelter anyways in the Twin Cities.
Well, not in the Twin Cities.
Or in the city of Los Angeles.
Well, that's why we want to have the, the regulations, so that-
Yeah, but I think you have to decide whether or not we're gonna do the overlay or not. And once we decide-
Right.
That the overlay is gonna stay where it is, then we can go on to, you know, the definition-
Then we don't have to do the definitions, because it's not a, it's not an issue.
Exactly. You know, and then we can either go with a conditional use, or we can, you know-
Right.
Set examples that, you know, the size of a homeless shelter can be two beds, three beds, or whatever, and where it can be located. But I think the overlay is the big thing.
Okay.
We have to decide and recommend to the city council that we are gonna leave it as it is, or we're gonna abolish it.
Okay. Michael?
Nothing, I want to contradict you, Roger. A little difficult, 'cause I'm seeing several moving parts here. One is, I, I wouldn't want to vote on lifting or not lifting the overlay until we vetted, what would we be looking at if we were to lift it? 'Cause that would make a difference in my ultimate vote. If we were to, and this is my consideration at the last meeting, when I saw how, you know, things were progressing, is that if we simply said no to the lifting of the overlay, we're gonna get a city council recommendation that come down to us that we didn't have input on. That was the discussion where it was better for the board to initiate than the council to initiate. Now, we would simply be asked whether we approved or not. We could vote seven to zero in opposition to what the city council sent it down from on high, and the city council can turn around and vote it in.
Yeah.
And that, that was not the avenue that I wanted to tread on last week. I came into the meeting, very willing to vote no on lifting the overlay, but as the discussion ensued, it made sense to have the discussion here, have it initiated here, and that we can control the outcome, and then have a well-worked, uh, package to send up to the council. And in the end, because it is zoning and land use and code, if, if we came up with any recommendation, even if it was a four-three vote, the council would need a supermajority to override.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So.
Now, I have a question. I, for staff, what is your recommendation to the planning board? How do you feel about lifting the overlay or, and, and using other regulations to control where the shelters could be? Or do we keep the, the overlay? I want your opinion.
Deputy Director, you want to go first? You want me to go first?
I'll go first if you want.
Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so, I think that there's a lot of possibility for using buffers, for looking at how a site is designed, setbacks from property lines, requiring sufficient spaces for people to gather and places for people to be, so that they're not spilling out into right-of-ways and into neighboring properties. That I think with those types of things in place for a conditional use permit review, there is the opportunity for the board to have more control than you have right now, because we don't have those things, on how a facility is designed, so that it is less of a nuisance to a neighborhood or to an adjacent business owner or resident. We do, we are required to ha, allow, um, community living arrangements of eight people or fewer kind of throughout the city, and people have alluded to that, where there's a number of group homes and other facilities. So I think that, you know, there could be enough guardrails, if you will, in place to allow smaller facilities in residential areas. Maybe not on all lots of all sizes, but a lot that was big enough and so forth. I think that there, it would be helpful for there to be more choice as to, for somebody when they are trying to pick a site. But I would certainly want the board to have worked through some of those requirements so that we all feel good the first time a shelter comes before you, that you have the tools that you need to be able to really address nuisance issues and the teeth within the ordinance to be able to do that, especially if an operator, you know, isn't inclined to be as good a neighbor. Operators come in all shapes and sizes and differences. So, I think there's a benefit to considering opening up to, to additional areas, but it's not, you know, it's not just a, a quick process. I think we have to go through this level of discussion if we're gonna do that. That'd be my, my suggestion.
Let's do it.
I, I like Mr. Markcott's, you know, answer. You have, you have an opportunity to look at the overlay now as it stands, and then you have an opportunity to come up with an alternative-
Mm-hmm.
That, that you so choose. And, and you can look at the, the cost-benefit analysis of both and, and choose, you know, which, which direction you guys would like to go. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of folks say, you know, it's out there now where, where the current shelter is, you know, the warming center is about to take place and, and possibly turning into a shelter. We've heard a lot of folks say that it's, it's, it is a good spot. It would not be allowed in the current overlay right now. So just taking some of those things into, into account as you're going through the process. But I, I, I would recommend that you, that you take Mr. Markcott's advice and, and look at both, and, and you guys come up with what you would like to see, and, and then match that up against the current overlay and, and see which direction you'd like to go in.
Okay.
And I, and I will, just to jump on that, you know, that site that's being considered is a good site, but if you're, the business is adjacent, they have concerns. And I think regardless of what good site is found, there are going to be neighbors who have concerns. And so having those, um, extra considerations for the types of nuisances that can be caused through a shelter is a really valuable thing for us to add to the ordinance review process.
Mm-hmm. Alex?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, it seems like, you know, members of the board have concerns, depending on scale, and I think it might make sense to just start naming those, getting sort of a list together. And that's why, you know, the map as a tool is really helpful with this, 'cause I think some of those concerns have to go with proximity to things. And let's just start to workshop it. I mean, that's, that's the point of a workshop here.
Right, right.
So, and I completely agree with everyone who's already said, you know, if you're gonna do a comparison, you need two things to compare at least, and right now, we have something versus an unknown quantity.
Right.
So let's come up with a known quantity in the workshop tonight. Even, even if it does take time, and even if we decide that it isn't worth pursuing, I think it's a useful exercise to understand, you know, where, we're thinking about this. And, you know, the council is going to act on this in some way. So, you know, let's, let's take control of our decision.
So, so do you guys want to start, let's say, uh, so right now, the overlay is, is in the downtown area. And so it's not NCA, NCB, it's, it's just the, yeah, you can use the back of it. So, do you guys want to start, let's say, with the most residential areas and then work our way to the more, to the, you know, the, the less residential? Like, NCA, NCB, that's, that's really neighborhoods, do we, do we want to, do we want to have, allow, like, a family shelter with? And I don't think we can do beds, because how many, you know, if, if you're, if it's a family, you know, do they, they've got four kids and, and mom and dad, or mom and, or dad?
I would think that we could still do beds.
And I think you gotta find some metric. I don't, I don't think we need, I don't-
I'm just, I'm just mumbling here.
Let's, uh, I, I would propose, let's take a look at this not, like, let's not start just playing pick and choose with zones. I think it would be good to sort of define facilities, and then, from there, we can work out to like, well, what zones do these fit in and why? Or why not? Right? So-
Okay.
Should we just start with, like, small, medium, and large, and try to-
Well, do we want to include, let's say, like, specify, like, family?
And I think that would be part of that discussion. Let's get these broad categories going and-
Okay. So small, medium, and large.
I don't know.
Plus you.
Or we could just do small and large. I, I don't, I don't see why we'd maybe think about this differently. Um, okay, so-
All right, so-
If, if we have to have, you know, eight, eight non-related people living in one building is pretty much-
Standard.
By rote, and, and that feels like a-
Well, it's allowable.
That seems like a great buff, a great thing to call small.
Okay.
Yep.
Starting out there.
So eight, eight people?
Yeah.
So eight beds?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause I'm sure they're most probably not.
Let's assume they're not sharing beds.
Yes, let's, let's assume they're not sharing beds, so-
And then let's go for the other bound, what, what's large? And I think that, when we talk about concerns around shelters, large shelters are the ones that raise the most concerns.
Yes.
By far. And so let's figure out what the floor is to large. Um, and think about-
The floor or the ceiling?
I would say the floor.
And start, so, what's the smallest, largest-
Where does, where does, where does large start for folks?
Okay.
Right, is it nine people, or is it something else?
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. And that will define whether or not we have a medium. I, in my mind, I, I'm, and this is kind of just like gut feeling, it's not really based in reality, but like, something in the double digits, for sure, north of 20.
I'm thinking, yeah, I was thinking 30.
24.
30, yeah.
24.
24? For a large?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any context for that?
It's three times, I mean, it's, what, three times eight?
Okay, perfect.
Okay, let's start with that. So do we want a medium that would be between eight and 24?
Eight to 24.
That's it, nine to 23 is medium.
So nine to 23?
That sounds right.
That's still pretty big.
Yeah, what, do we know how many beds some of the existing shelters have? And I think, I'm thinking about the ones that we've sort of identified as, here they are in the community, they do good work, and they don't seem to be a nuisance. Do we know how many beds that they have?
We don't. I can certainly provide that for the next meeting.
I think that would be really, so, we got sort of a rough definition of beds here, but let's, yeah, let's truth this with, like, reality, you know? 'Cause if we have a shelter that's operating in it, in our community, that's doing a great job, and they have 50 beds, and it's, you know, having the impact that we'd expect for a 23 or less scenario, let's figure out why that is, right? And, and see if that falls into our purview, or if it's more of a licensing thing, right?
I'm curious too about the, if you look at the, you know, who's being served with those numbers to a youth shelter, family shelter, low barrier, then they, they start having different things that they are.
Yeah. Now, do we want to, so that's a good point. Should we talk about youth shelters for, you know, homeless, single youth, you know, unaccompanied youth?
Well, there's a definition, right?
Yeah, and then let's talk about families too. That, that seems like a natural, you know, general-
Seems like you could do-
Families, single, single kids.
Small, homeless child or youth shelter, medium homeless child or youth shelter, large homeless child or youth shelter, small homeless family shelter, medium homeless family shelter, right? Seeing as those definitions already exist.
Right, 'cause we've got, we've got the definition for, for homeless children and, and children shelters and-
Correct.
And youth, right, in, in that they gave us this time.
Then all other would be-
Yeah, so for, like, a family shelter, would we look at making small bigger? Uh, and I'm just spitballing this, you know, let's say, you know, average American family, two parental figures and two children, right? I think that's still the national-
It's the 2.5 children.
Yeah, 2.5 children. Uh, two and a half beds for the kids.
Yeah.
And so if you have two families, that's a small shelter right there. Two families, does that feel like that makes sense? I mean, this is, this is one where I really, it's really too bad that some of the existing organizations didn't get back to us, 'cause I don't, you know, does it just, like, absolutely not make sense to have a shelter where you're only able to provide services in one location to two families, right? Or is three families the threshold? We don't really know.
Well, I mean, I mean, if you're talking about a residential area, I can see how neighbors in the residential area would not want anything particularly large or anything that looks other than a residential home.
Yep.
Right?
Right, right. And, and the possibility of two families living in a residential home makes sense.
Right, that's, that makes sense.
You know, it makes sense for adults, for kids, let's say, you know, I mean, that happens.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, you know, I mean, you might have one, one, one with two children and two with three children, or, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's, you know, 'cause you gotta be flexible, because, you know, some people have four kids, and-
Yeah.
You know, other people have just one.
But if we do it by number of beds, and like, let's say, you had families coming in where there's, it's a single-parent family, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you end up with, you know, three or four families, depending on the number of kids that are in there, you're still not exceeding that bed requirement, but you, maybe from an impact standpoint, it's a little different, 'cause you just have, you know, more, you know, I'd imagine family units are gonna travel together, right? Is that gonna cause more of that impact that you were just talking about?
I, I think we, we need to, like, limit, if, if we're looking at, like, the residential areas and putting a couple of families, but I don't think we, we could put more than two, because you've got to realize that there's going to be vehicles. So if you've got two families, you've, you've got potential to have four vehicles. I mean, I-
For a homeless family?
Well, that's true.
Probably gonna sell a car before you're gonna-
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, true, true.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, so you're gonna have a, a couple of cars anyways, but I mean, if you've got four, you-
Probably two, at the most, right?
Right, right. So, I, I'm just concerned, you know, because if it's in a NCA, a neighborhood, let's say on, like, Mark Street or Hamill Street, or, you know, you don't, it's not, you can't count my, my house, neighborhood. Um, y- y- you know, the, the neighbors are going to be concerned if there's too many vehicles coming in and out of this, this one home.
So, what if we just said, um, a small family shelter has four beds for adults, and we did not specify beds for children? So that would give more flexibility to the size of the family, but maybe would take care of some of the concerns around vehicle traffic and, like, family units leaving, right? That sort of guarantees that, you know, you're not gonna have more than four family units in a, in a building. Uh, under, you know, worst-case scenario. Does it, how, how do, and I'm just spitballing this one.
Yeah, I'm not understanding-
Does that not feel good?
No, because if you're, if you're talking NCA, those are single-family homes. Not, this is not a, a two-family or- Not, this is not a, a two-family or generally.
They don't have to be, so if you allow a homeless shelter there and someone decides to build one, they, it's not necessarily a single-family home. You know, they're building a facility, if they have a big enough lot, they'd have enough room for parking. So I guess that there's some flexibility there. And NCA definitely has, you know, two-family and three-family buildings in it. It's just not as common.
Right, okay, all right. Well, that, you know, just trying to throw things.
Yeah, no, that's what we gotta do, we gotta, we gotta work through this.
That's what we're gonna do, is, work through this, so.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
Back to your, your, your numbers that you guys are working with. These shelters are all gonna have to, you know, fall under the, the international building codes, right? When they come to apply for their permit. And, and luckily, they do give us some numbers, right? So, for a residential, it, it's going to be called a residential group. There's, there's four Rs to it, there's R1 through four. Under the R1, uh, to be considered an R1 boarding house, which is the equivalent, uh, in building codes as a shelter. For transient members of more than ten occupants, they would be an R1. For R2, they would have, have non-transient or transient of more than sixteen. That's how they define it for an R2. Ten and sixteen are the two numbers that they, that they commonly reference in the international building codes, just so you guys have a frame of reference, um, as you're going forward. So, those are, those are the two big numbers that you see in, in IBC is, is less than ten, or sixteen or more. So, just something to keep in mind as you're, as you're going through your discussions tonight.
So, I, I mean, I'm indifferent either way with, as far as the number is concerned.
Could you repeat that?
I, I'm indifferent as far as the number of residents. I, I do agree that we should say, okay, well, there's, there's a small and there's a large. Because in, to my thinking, that means within certain areas, we are going to limit the number of large and small. You know, uh, units within a particular, uh, within a particular area. Does that make sense? So that's the only reason why I care about, why it makes sense to say, small and large, or small, medium, and large, to me. Because the way I'm thinking of it is, I don't care about the buffers between the schools and, I, I don't think that makes any sense to me. It makes more sense to say, within, you know, zone whatever.
NCA, well, NCB.
You can't have, you can't have a homeless shelters, you know.
You can't have a large.
You can't have homeless shelters situated more than, or less than a hun- five hundred feet, or five hundred yards, or whatever, from another homeless shelter. Basically, in order to limit the amount of density of you ha- of having homeless shelters in particular areas. And as you get closer and closer to the downtown, then that, that buffer shrinks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're looking from a density standpoint.
In, you know, outer college street, near the Greentown line, it's, okay, well, you can have one large homeless shelter for every, you know, thousand yards, right? Or two thousand feet, or three thousand feet. That's how I'm thinking of it.
That's, so.
That's just a, that's just a spitball idea, not.
And that's coming, and that's coming from like, an impact perspective. The, the idea that if you have them more spread out in places where.
Right.
Having it spread out makes more sense, the impact will be lower.
Correct.
That's what you're thinking about.
So mirroring the, the marijuana zoning, basically.
Like, if that's how the marijuana is, right, yeah. That, that's, that's how I think.
So, maybe we could just go back to try and get some, some basic numbers on the table here, um, and then we can get to discussions around that. I wonder, in my mind, thinking about, you know, a family shelter, if you limit it to eight, that, that seems like it might be restrictive for a family shelter. So I wonder if we would say ten for small family shelter.
Sure.
Right, and use that as the floor, just make it a little bit bigger, because we're not dealing with single individuals, right?
Well, and by law, it can be eight, it, it has to be eight, we have to allow eight, correct? But tho- those are non, non-related, correct?
For community living arrangement, not a shelter. So they are a little different in that a community living arrangement usually has some sort of, um, structure? As far as people are in a rehab program, or they're in a group home setting.
And their staff?
There's usually staff, although, there doesn't have to be, I think it depends on where they are with their, let's say, recovery. It may be more of a, a housing arrangement where people are helping each other kind of keep with their program. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there's someone there twenty-four hours.
Would that be like a Murphy home?
Um, it could be, yes, those certainly exist throughout the city, um, and are allowed as the eight or fewer.
So, Murphy home would be considered a community and not a shelter?
Uh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, because they live there, then, that, you know, they're not, they're not, uh, transients.
And they're receiving services. So the, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're saying, small family would be max ten individuals?
Yeah, to just give it a little extra space.
We're not, we're not specifying beds, and, but we're saying ten individuals.
Right, the, the term that's used over and over is occupants.
Occupants, okay, well, ten occupants, okay.
Ten occupants. Yep, and then I think.
Can I just ask for one clarification? It makes sense to me to align the numbers with what the IBC says, right? So ten, occupancy of ten for the family.
Right.
Over sixteen, like, just use, those are the numbers, let's use them.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure I understand what those are. Are those per zoning district?
That is just, that is per building, that's, that's, this is just looking at the structure itself. If you, if you're ten and below, uh, you know, you can be R1. If you're ten and above, uh, or sixteen and above, you can, you can be a different, you know, R. And, and there's different.
What's the R?
What's the R?
So that's just, i- it's a category that'll have different rules and regulations for it. You know, R1, you would need to have the entire building sprinkled, and there's, and, and you have to have a notification system. There's just, there's different levels of, of what they need to do for their building permit, uh, to meet the R1 through R4.
And is there?
What's in between?
Yeah, right, is there one for R, eleven this?
Between ten and sixteen.
So, again, R1 is a boarding house with transient occupants with more than ten occupants. Congregate living facility.
With more than, or less than?
With more than, so.
Okay.
So, if they have more than ten, they would meet the R1 classification, and they would have to, you know, have all of that building permit information, you know, taken care of. If, if it's less, then they, then they wouldn't, they would, you know, they, they fall under that limit. So, they're not going to be as strict, as stringent. R2 is a boarding house with non-transients with more than sixteen occupants. So the way the building code looks at this is, is you think of a transient and a, and a non-transient. A, a transient is not going to know the lay of the land as much as somebody who's there on a permanent basis. So if you're, if you're transient occupants, they're gonna want more stringent, um, you know, things like sprinkler systems? Um, your design, your rooms, your spr- your, uh, fire suppression, your fire, uh, notification? Because they're not familiar with their surroundings. So, uh, that's transient. R3, R3 talks about boarding houses for non-transient. You meet the R3 status if you are, uh, you have sixteen or fewer occupants that are non-transient. If you are transient with ten or fewer occupants, you meet the R3.
So it's basically ten and sixty?
Correct. And, and, and you keep in mind transient and non-transient, that, they throw those in there, that, that kind of plays a big role with it. But those, those are the numbers that they continually use. And this is just a, a starting point, you guys can obviously.
But, but these are all transient, period.
Yes.
So, we use those definitions.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the definition of a transient? Is it, I mean, because we're talking, these, these people are going to be there, you know, more than one night. It's not going to be like, you know, transient, i- in my mind, transient is here today, gone tomorrow. Uh, and, and non-transient would be?
Thirty days or, thirty days or less is generally considered transient.
Okay, so thirty days or less. So, these probab- possibly could be transient.
Yeah, and, but again, you know, the, he's just giving us these sort of ideas of what we could maybe base our stuff on.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get in my mind, the definition of transient, non-transient.
Okay.
Okay?
So I think, uh, just getting back to the small, medium, and large, I think we could word it so that it's, um, shelters that house sixteen or more? Transients for one classification, housing, uh, shelters that house sixteen or fewer, uh, or fewer than sixteen as another. And then for a, specifically for a small one, fewer than ten, or, is that correct? Fewer than ten, or ten and fewer?
Right.
Ten or ten, so if you were to say, a small shelter is ten or fewer occupants?
Yeah, okay.
A medium is sixteen and fewer.
Yeah.
And then anything over sixteen is a large.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that, that, that sounds good, everybody?
Yep.
As far as just simply definitions.
Just definitions, oh, yeah, yeah, we're just.
The definition is of small, medium, and large.
Correct.
Yeah.
No more than that, as far as definition.
Right, that's for that, for that particular definition, okay? So, so we've got that, now do we want to specify family and youth?
They already def- they already defined that.
They're, they're already defined, so use those definitions right there.
Correct.
Okay.
Are you talking about the definitions on page one?
Yeah.
I'm talking about the definitions in the chapter twenty-two.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Title twenty-two, health and welfare definitions. Okay, if we use those definitions for, um, children's, homeless children, and, I don't know, what's the difference between children and ones in emergency shelter?
Yep, these are both for, it sound, from my reading of it, for unaccompanied children, not, not necessarily families?
Yeah, no, right, so you would say, for example, a homeless chil- shelter that is sheltering homeless children or youth? Versus a homeless shelter sheltering homeless families.
Got it, so we need a family definition.
Versus a homeless shelter with, that is for any use, right?
Yeah.
And is there a specific definition in here for families?
Yes, yes.
Yes, first, yeah.
Page two, second paragraph, page two.
Yep. Homeless family means one or two caregivers, and includes at least one or more children or youth.
And like on page three, that's still state definitions?
Correct.
That's, that's the new city council definition.
That's, that's our definition.
That's the city council, the new city council definition that would be in the.
He said, you said page three, correct?
Page three is state.
Page three is the state.
Page three is state, and it says title twenty-two.
Correct.
I guess what's confusing is, um, the preceding to page two says prior chapter twenty-two. So it's using the same number twenty-two.
Yeah, but this is one city and one state.
But that's city, purely city.
Right.
That's right.
One's chapter, and the other one's title. It's a different.
So there's two pages that are City of Lewiston. And then, when you get to page three, at the top, it says state definitions, and those are state. And then at the bottom of page two, it says Code of Federal Regulations, and that's federal.
So, small, medium, and large, we're going to go for a unified definition, regardless of it being youth or child, family?
Right.
Or adult.
Right.
And we're just going to keep it that way. Just wanted to be clear about that.
That works for everybody? Everybody sounds good? And, and we use the state definitions, uh, and, and the city definition for, uh, family and shelter, children's and youth shelter?
Right, you use the city's definitions for you.
For, for the description of the types of, of shelter, okay?
Yep.
All right, so that's, that's something.
So, request, I think the request here would be that we refer to the state definitions in our city definitions that we will then refer to. So, planning, planning is, is going to be working within the city's code, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, I think the idea is that a lot of the definitions in here are going to be captured someplace in the city code? You know, around, you know, what is a homeless youth?
Either the licensing or in zoning.
Yeah, in licensing, yeah. So, but just, just to make sure that we're not like, for children's shelter, we refer to state stuff. For family shelter, we have our own definition that we did here in Lewiston.
No, no.
Would we have it flow through?
From my understanding, there is no definition for a family shelter for the state, that's why I'm saying, we would just use our own definitions.
We would just use our own definitions, right?
Yeah.
Whether it, it be in licensing or in, in the code, okay? Mr. McCarthy, since you've been so patient, uh, do you have any comments? Since we are entertaining comments, I'll.
Should we officially open this for public comment? Or does it not have to?
There, there is no public comment during a wer- a workshop. We're just allowing people, since it's only Mr. McCarthy, I thought I'd, I'd have him interject if he, if he so chose.
My real concern is protecting the residential areas of the city.
And that is ours as well.
That overlay that, that was put together, there was a lot of work that went into that. You guys were all, the planning board?
Yep.
For those, for that time, was part of it, and it was to protect, it was to put shelters in areas that made sense.
Is this getting captured on the mics for folks who are watching? Would you mind repeating that at the podium?
Well, that's true, I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
Just trying to make this successful.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Bob McCarthy, thirty-four Regine Avenue. Yeah, the shelter overlay, and it kind of bothers me that they want to do away with it, uh, because of the hard, all the hard work that went into it? Both from the planning board's perspective, the joint meetings we had, and city council. We looked at areas that would not impact the neighborhood by having those shelters. And now I hear you've thrown out numbers of like, sixteen. A shelter with sixteen in a residential neighborhood would not fly. I don't care, I mean, I live on College Road, and there's a lot of empty land out there. And you could build something that is a thousand feet away from my house. But if you've got sixteen individuals leaving that shelter during the day, or wandering neighborhoods, you're asking for trouble. So I really think that, that's one of the things that you guys have to take into consideration. You've got to protect a residential neighborhood. There's a lot of people that are, um, impacted financially with what's going on with the taxes. We've got the, um, reevaluation coming up that is going to impact a lot of people. And the last thing you want to do is have someone's house reevaluated, their taxes going up two thousand dollars a year? And then you put a shelter in, and it drops the evaluation by fifty thousand. So that's, all I'm asking is that you take into account the people, the citizens, the residents that pay the taxes, that support this city? And that you protect them from this. I'm, I, you know, homeless shelters are a thing that are, that are necessary. One of the other things that I wanted to bring up, and I heard you guys discussing this with buffers? Is, I think that if you, if you kept with an overlay zone, you could do away with buffers for family and children's shelters? Because family shelters and children's shelters, you're not going to get the neigh- the, you're not going to get the issues with parks and daycares and stuff like that. So you really, the only, the only shelters that need buffers are for adults. And those are the ones that you, so you can take that into account, and that opens up more areas of that overlay zone for family and youth shelters. And, you know, that overlay zone could be tweaked. I mean, the, the, um, warming shelter where that is, is, um, is not part of that, but could be? Because that's a pretty open area, and I think that that will probably work out there. I, I know there's a few businesses that are not going to be happy, but that's, wherever you put a shelter, there's going to be people that aren't happy. But I think that could be part of it. One other comment I want to make, with the Hope Haven, being not part of the overlay zone? The idea behind what that was to protect the, uh, River Island, uh, area? Because that is a area that the city is pushing to develop and improve and get people downtown. And so that's why it, the overlay starts at the other side of Park Street and goes out. So it protects the commercial areas and protects the, uh, River Island Master Plan. Like I said, my preference would be to see you take that, the overlay, increase it a little bit? And then deal with the shel- the buffers as far as just having buffers for non-family adult shelters. And I think that that would open up more areas and, um, hopefully help solve some of the problems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, Michael?
Thinking about what Mr. McCarthy, no, was saying and suggesting, and that's the current overlay up on the board, right?
Yes, it is.
Expanding it a little bit beyond its current borders, uh, has, uh, makes some sense. With respect to reducing buffers for the families and youth, uh, shelters? You're saying that right now, and if I remember correctly, it's been a few years since this was put in place? That, um, some of the buffers that were put in place at the time sort of squeezed areas within that overlay to almost no opportunity? Except for one that came about and didn't actually end up happening, which was the former Sun Journal Building, right? So, so if those buffers, uh, that are in that overlay, uh, were reduced because of where it is? That would probably open up other opportunities that didn't exist. Is that my understanding, uh, which makes sense? And, uh. And, uh, as far as, uh, the warming center keeps being, being mentioned, and, uh, I'm not sure if I'm fully comprehending, but you're talking about, uh, along, uh-
Schmangies.
Schmangies.
Lincoln Street.
Yeah, Lin- Lincoln Street, I was trying to remember Lincoln Street. So, does the overlay have to be contiguous, like, can it, uh, be non-contiguous, meaning not coming down Lincoln Street?
You mean just spot, just put a, put a, an overlay over Schmangies?
Over, over Schmangies, or even a few other parcels, if it makes sense, to, to broaden it a little bit. Um, all, all of those ideas seem to fit where I'm going, uh, 'cause I'm really concerned, again, about the neighborhoods, it's about the property values, it's about having transients in, uh, shelters, in the neighborhoods, and the impact of transients coming out and walking through, you know, the city in areas that are very neighborhood-oriented, as opposed to being downtown, where the services are. Uh, someone suggested to me recently, an idea, take mill number five, turn it into a massive, uh, homeless shelter, uh, uh, system. Uh, you could take care of the, the people that we know exist along the so-called Rockies, and then behind the Promenade Mall, uh, along, you know, the river trails, and out by, I still call it Tall Pines, um, and have the services right there.
That's right.
Now, the services could be designed around transitioning, uh, people who are homeless, uh, to a better life, whether they are newly homeless, uh, whether they're families that, uh, came on hard times, whether they're, uh, trying to find the right adjective for it, but, uh, the people who have been homeless for a long time, just recidivism, if that's a good word for it.
Chronic homelessness?
Chronic, yeah, that, that's better than the one that I used. Now, if it's chronic, I mean, the services would be intensified in a place like that, uh, in order to truly address the situation. Simply, uh, uh, going about this in a way where we, uh, uh, create more opportunities for homeless shelters, but not addressing the root problem, uh, could, could really have a negative impact on this community over time, um, because of the economic impacts, uh, the, uh, the social and criminal activities that occur. Um, I, I, I heard of another episode that happened on, uh, Sabata Street, you know, here this past weekend. Uh, I mentioned one at a meeting several back, where somebody I know got stuck with a needle. Well, apparently, in the same business, uh, there's an individual doing an illegal substance, and the police had to come and take care of the situation. Um, I, I think it ended with a restraining order, but no, uh, criminal charge, because the drug use was consumed and flushed, you know, before, uh, the law enforcement could, uh, actually make that charge, uh, so, that's why it took them so long to, to get the person out of the, of the bathroom at that establishment. But, uh, th- those are concerns, and I don't want that migrating, of course, that's along a corridor, which we're saying no to homeless shelters.
Well, Lincoln Street is not a corridor.
Okay, yeah, well, well, Sabata Street is, and I, and I was thinking about the Sabata Street corridor, uh, but, a- and it's still not preventing, I mean, homeless shelter, no homeless shelter, we've got issues like that.
Well, we're gonna have issues like that everywhere, no matter whether, even if we have a homeless shelter, I mean, people, some people refuse to go to a shelter and, and will do what they wanna do, no matter what.
A- a- and that's a good point, and a good segue, uh, to the, uh, I, is there a study? What, what is the need in Lewiston, what is the scope of the need, or scale of the need, uh, and how many people will actually use these services, you know, what will be, uh, I, I heard earlier, uh, director mentioned, uh, cost, uh, benefit analysis, you know, what, what is that? I haven't seen any of that, uh, uh, leading up to this ask, or this, uh, request of the board. Um, so, so, uh, we all know what the problem is, we'd like to see it go away, but just simply, uh, creating a wider scope of an overlay to allow more opportunity for, you know, some enterprising, uh, effort to, uh, triangulate, uh, federal and state resources to put up a homeless shelter, to take care of a handful of people, uh, which, uh, may end up doing nothing, except for negatively impacting the people in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, I mean-
I keep coming, I keep coming back to the word neighborhoods.
Yep.
Amy?
Uh, yeah, so just a couple of things, um, Michael, a couple of years ago, I was on the Shelter Committee, and there are numbers, so that report has a lot of data, it's two years old, but I think, if anything, the problem has probably increased in scope, but there should be a way to update those numbers. Um, just a point of process here, it feels like some of these things that we're talking about are basically with the definition of the size and the nature, which is a little three-by-three matrix, which I'm excited to see, something that we can say, size by type of shelter, that we could use that and apply that and say, the following zones are eligible to have this block of this matrix and the other block of the matrix without having an overlay district. Because the overlay just feels arbitrary, and you move it one block this way, or four blocks that way, you know, you've got the Riverfront Island, um, Master Plan, so if Riverfront Island is not a zone, then that could get a shelter. So I, it feels like we should, instead of using this weird overlay tool, that we should just use what we already have, which are zones and limits, and these sizes and types.
And the buffers.
And the buffers, 'cause I totally agree about the buffers being much smaller for youth and family shelters, you know, you want people near parks and schools.
Or, or not, or nonexistent.
Or nonexistent, so.
Right, you want them next to schools, you want them next to, to parks, you want them in, in those areas for a family or youth.
Right.
I mean, the one that's the most, that, that, what everybody is talking about without saying it, is the, the shelter, the type of shelter that is adults transient that are, you know, they're, they're drug addicted, or, or they're, you know, the people that, that park, you know, they're in the park, or, or people that have been chronically, uh-
Folks with social issues.
Right, social issues, mental issues, and, and those are the, that's the shelter that we don't want in a neighborhood.
Right.
Okay, and, and I agree completely.
I think one of the dynamics with that too is a shelter that doesn't, not only doesn't have daytime programming, but people have to leave in the morning, come back later, and so there is that, that transience is happening all the time.
Yeah, that's what we want to make sure.
So even with a family shelter, they might be, I mean, they're not gonna be leaving during the day, um, or youth shelter, they're gonna have daytime programming,
Oh, they're gonna go to work, or, or go-
So it's gonna be something that's more compatible with, um, other stuff around them.
That should be something we include in our, our categories, um, and this is, 'cause we were talking about this in the last meeting, where it gets a little fuzzy of like, that sort of feels more like a licensing thing, but-
Mm, yep.
A lot of the concerns that people raise of extra traffic, people loitering, that operational choice, whether or not you allow people to be there all the time, or if you kick them out-
Mm-hmm.
Really can make a difference. And so, I wonder how we can think about that, maybe in terms of a definition of like, uh-
A shelter with services, not-
A full-time shelter versus a temporary shelter, and temporary shelter is defined as not allowing people to be there for, you know-
During the day, I mean, they, they-
More than a twenty-four hour, or, you know, more than twelve hours, or something like that.
Yeah, you know, that mean-
Is that getting outside our purview, though?
That's what I'm wondering about, of like-
Is, is that something, is that licensing, that would be more licensing, wouldn't it?
It is, but I think a lot of when we talk about location, what is brought up as, well, we can't locate that here, is directly impacted by that operational choice. And so that's an area where, um, I think it, and like fundamentally, the type of business is different, right? If you think about it that way, like, they're, they're fundamentally providing a different type of service, even though we call it the same thing, right?
Yeah.
You know, like, like a, a, a building, you know, to put it in other context, a building that rents out rooms to traveling nurses is different than a hotel, but fundamentally, it's someone in a room that they rent, and it's not, you know, their main place of, of-
Residence.
Right, right, like, but, but the impact of that is very, very different. So, how do we, how do we figure that out in the definitions, in a way that doesn't get us down the licensing rabbit?
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, I, I think, go ahead, Amy.
No, just to piggyback on that, because that's also the reason that people are, uh, during the day, out there with shopping carts and all their belongings, right? Because there's not, they don't trust that they can leave it behind, or they're not allowed to leave it behind, so I totally agree that a twenty-four-hour facility is very different from one where people can stay there during the day.
So do we, do we wanna put that, you know, when we're talking about large shelters? Like, in my mind, if I was gonna sort of group these, right, children and families, you know, small and medium seems, you know, small seems like they would fit anywhere in the city, right?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe some people would disagree with that, but I, I feel like that feels pretty fair to me, you know?
Yeah.
Having, having a bunch of homeless kids, uh, in, in my neighborhood, so that they're not on the streets, that seems good. I mean, there's already a, a group doing that, a couple blocks from me, and it's fine. Um, for, you know, shelters where it's just unrelated adults, do we, you know, do we say that the type of restrictions that we wanna put on that type of shelter, a large shelter of that nature, um, would apply to any shelter that doesn't provide twenty-four-hour service, regardless of what they're doing? Because it's gonna cause those-
Yeah, because it doesn't matter whether they're sixteen or they're, they're, they're twenty-five, if they have to leave at eight in the morning, after breakfast, and they can't get back in till five o'clock at night for dinner, that means that they're roaming around the, the city, and that's where you're getting the issues with, with the neighbors.
Yeah, even if it's just someone like sitting on the curb, 'cause they have no place else to go-
Right.
That bugs me.
Yeah, they don't have to have a, the shopping cart with all their stuff, but I mean, if they have, if they have nowhere to go, you know, Saint Martin's does that, Hope Haven does that, and I don't know about the others, but I know that those two for sure. So, these people, that's where we get the problem, uh, you know, they're hanging out at the library, or, or they're roaming the neighborhoods.
So let's define those as two different uses, right?
Right, I think, you know, if we have, if it is a, um, like the, the one on Lincoln Street, we have to stop calling it Schmangies, um-
Five fifty-one Lincoln, I believe is the address.
Five fifty-one, I think, so, Lincoln Street, um, if that is a twenty-four-hour shelter where there, there are, uh, services, and, and that type of thing, that will impact the neighbors much less, or hardly at all, than if they, like Hope Haven and Saint Martin, if they turn the people out at, after breakfast, and they can't come back till dinnertime.
So let's get a definition for that.
Then these people are, are, yeah, we, so we need to, to specify if it's a twenty-four-hour shelter with services, or a shelter that, like we have currently in our city, where people are, uh, you know, thrown out, they can't stay during the day.
Such as a warming shelter, such as a temporary overnight shelter.
Right, you know, I-
Those are two different definitions.
They're, they're totally different, because this is where we end up having the problems with the neighbors. And, and I think we, that's, we, we definitely have to be very, very careful that, you know, a, uh, warming shelter or an, an overnight shelter is not going to be in the neighborhoods, any neighborhood, you know, the NCA, NCB, uh, that, that, now, correct me, you know, people-
That's more like a commercial use.
Right, I mean, a commercial use, like, like, uh, Lincoln Street, that, that's a, a commercial use type of, of location. If we have a twenty-four-hour shelter with services, I'm not saying to put it in a neighborhood, but that will cause less disruption for a neigh- the area that it is put, put in, because these people will not, the, the, the clients will not be just roaming around the neighborhood, because they've got nowhere else to go. They will have, uh, places to go and, and things that they can be doing. I'm not saying they were gonna do it, but it's more likely that they will be- That they will be staying inside and, or going for certain services. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so, so we've got a couple of definitions and stuff, so now, the next step would be to talk about, okay, so do we maintain, do we wanna talk about keeping the, the overlay, or do we wanna talk about expanding the overlay? Or do we wanna eliminate the overlay and use conditional uses, and following the definitions that we're establishing? And I mean, we're not-
Yeah.
You know, we're not voting on anything tonight, we're just talking. And do we want to, um, limit this stuff?
I would like to take the categories that we came up with, uh, and I think we have some rough categories now, that we all more or less agree on, and I'd like to talk about, because functionally, you know, the overlay district is about sort of keeping that type of development in a certain part of the city, I'm sure that was the intention, right?
Yeah.
And behind that intention is, what is it located next to, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's where that intention comes from. So let's go through each category-
Yes.
Based on the definitions that we're trying to flesh out right now, and say, what do we not want that to be near, and then also, what do we want it to be near? We've all, I think, have voiced this at one point, of like, kids need to be near schools.
Right.
We all see that.
So the family and youth.
So let's, can we, let's like systematically go through, just category one. So, category one is, uh, small family shelter.
Right.
Let's start there. Small family shelter, are there things that we don't want that near, are there things that we do want that near?
Well, are we saying a small family twenty-four-hour shelter, or a small family-
Small family twenty-four-hour shelter.
Yeah. To me, small family twenty-four-hour shelter, meaning ten, ten or fewer residents, I have no problem that-
I don't think there's any restriction.
In any residential area at all.
Yeah.
Right.
Like, if they were my neigh- if they were my next-door neighbor, and it's two families that are there primarily because they're homeless temporarily, because the father and the mother can't seem to get a job or something like that, and they're, they're working to-
Or, or there's no apartments that they can afford.
Right, or they can't, right, or they can't afford it, or it's some twenty-year-old kid who's like, I, I, I can't rent anything, 'cause it's too expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
That feels okay.
I have no problem with that in a neighborhood.
Right.
And I get, I get the concern that, that that might, um, that if you have too many in a particular area, that that would start to negatively affect the residents.
So maybe, maybe a density thing there?
That's what I was saying.
Would be the only restriction that you could think of for that.
Right, right, yeah, we, we have to look at density, yeah.
So, just in the interest of time and moving along, so-
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I say one more thing, though?
Sure.
I think the thing that, uh, with a family shelter, it, I mean, I think transportation is probably gonna be a challenge for them, no two cars, sometimes not even one car, so proximity to services would, would not be a bad thing for the sake of the people there.
But isn't that more of a consideration of when I'm going to create a shelter, that's one of my business considerations, or my nonprofit's considerations, right? It's not really a zoning consideration.
Perhaps what we could say is that, because Shannon brought this up last time, and I thought this was really smart, is like, we wanna sort of leave breadcrumbs for people who are gonna apply, for them to know what we're kind of looking for. Um, maybe in that language, we could say, preferably near, you know, preferably near resources that families would need, preferably near transit lines. We're not requiring it, but we'll look favorably, favorably upon applications that it consider these. You know, just as something that we, we just sort of say that, you know?
Yeah, but I don't think that, that zoning, I think that would be more licensing that, that we-
But it has to do with physical location, and see, that's, and again, like, I, I don't want us to get too mired in licensing, but I think, you know, if we do, and this is supposing a conditional use model, and not saying that that's where we're gonna end up, but it, but if we're gonna say, hey, applicant, you need to come to us, and you're gonna get a conditional approval on this, and maybe that's not what we do for a small family shelter, we just say, go for it, right? We don't need to do conditional use for those. But if we do go down a conditional use model, you wanna at least tell them a little bit of like, we're not gonna just deny you, because that's the way the wind's blowing that day, right? We wanna give you a little direction of like, yeah, we don't want you putting a small family shelter out in the middle of the woods, totally isolated from everything. That doesn't seem like a, a, a good place for it, but, or maybe we do, I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, um-
I loved what Michael was saying earlier about, like, just creating a hub, you know, and how that, that really puts the needs of those people, like, it just makes it more coherent, I, that, mm.
I, I don't disagree with that, but again, I think that's more of the organization's prerogative of, well, if I'm here really to serve a particular population, what's best for that population, that's not really a planning board zoning, you know, I, I don't see it as a-
Right.
I don't agree for a zoning use.
Yeah.
Yep, right.
So, moving along, so if we go to medium, family, not short-term, so that's more than ten, less than sixteen. In my mind, I, I think, if I was- In my mind, I, I think if I was gonna put a restriction on this, it would be like, where else do we put multifamily buildings? Because I think that's getting to the number of people where it's gonna behave like an apartment building, right? In terms of its needs. And so.
Downtown.
So like.
Yeah, the downtown residential.
Downtown's part of that. I think, you know, I live in NCB, so I'm actually within the shelter overlay district right now. There's a seven-unit building next to me, I can't imagine that a family shelter would be much different than that.
Yeah, but the big difference is that there's no buffers for a, a, a family or homeless shelter, right?
Yep.
That's really the big difference.
Yep, and, and I think, we're doing the easy stuff now, right? And I'm doing this just to be a little procedural and just like going through it and like, let's think about it. We're gonna have a hard dis- discussion in a, in a couple of buckets from now, I think, right? Large family shelter, um, so that's more than sixteen.
Yeah, I don't think that, that that's gonna be an issue, I, I don't think we wanna go into that. I think smaller and medium at the most. I don't think we wanna do a large family shelter, because I don't think that's.
But that's not us to. I don't know if that's us to the side.
We see, we need to define it, okay, all right.
For a rule on that, I would propose that we look at that more like a hotel, right? Because again, like that, that feels like more intensive, right? Like, um, and maybe that's sort of arbitrary based, you know, medium if we treat it more like a apartment building, but larger if we treat it more like a hotel, I don't know. But just thinking about the density of it, you know, that's sixteen and let's assume, you know, three to four people per family, that's, you know.
Doesn't take long.
Doesn't take long. And, and we don't, you know, after sixteen, we're just, you know, sky's the limit, right? So thinking about it in that way.
Well, but you could put an upper limit.
Could put it, we, we haven't yet.
Right, but you could.
Yeah.
On any of these, but for now, we're just establish the floors, right, in the categories.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the middle one already automatically has an upper.
Right, it happened.
But there are plenty of six-unit buildings in Lewiston that have more than sixteen humans.
Yep.
For sure, and they're just in downtown residential or, and it's all fine.
Yep, are there any things that we'd wanna have setbacks or, or, you know, buffer zones for a larger one?
I think family is, it's still the same, they, they should be close to schools, parks.
Yeah, we encourage applicants.
Daycares, because if the parents are going to be working or look, they, they need to have daycare for some of these kids. So, yeah, I think that small, medium and large, I don't think. Yeah, family.
As long as, as long as the surrounding use is similar, you know?
Fits with the zo- the zoning that, that they wanna put it in.
Duplex will fit anywhere, uh, if it's, you know, triplex, because it's sort of, or triplex equivalent, because it's the mid-size, then wherever that, there's that type of housing.
Go for it, right, okay.
What about the road corridors?
The what?
The corridors.
The road corridors, are you interested in having a buffer?
I don't, I, I don't see, because I don't see a family shelter being put in, in the corridors.
Why not?
So much because, because of, um, just where they, you know, they're, they're not residential. Most of them are, are, um, are zoned commercial, that's.
But a shelter is essentially a commercial use, right? It might be, if it's a family, they might have actual individual suites, but it doesn't have to be. It could still be families in a more open setting.
And, and the corridors would allow them to have, uh, transportation.
Do that in a commercial space potentially.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see an issue with, with not, with them not, not being in the corridors, well.
I'm a little conflicted on this one, actually, because.
Those are, that's the only place that, that there's buses in town.
No, I hear that, I hear that, um, but what I wonder about is not so much, you know, whether or not do we want a family shelter on a corridor? I think it's more what type of development are we looking for on corridors? And I think even for residential, you know, we already have the design standards, so I would assume, and I'm working this out as I'm talking here. I'm assuming that if we did allow that type of development on a corridor, the design standards would still apply, so a lot of those concerns.
No, because that's, that's out of the downtown, the, the design standards are only downtown.
Well, yeah, so.
Only in a certain area.
While I'm thinking about the downtown, when I'm trying to work through this.
Right, but if, if, if the downtown, most of it is, is the riverfront island and, and the commercial.
So are we excluding this from riverfront island? Is that an exclusion for all of this? We didn't talk about that, so let.
I, I, I don't see putting shelters in the riverfront island.
Well, again, I, my personal view is when we're talking about child shelters and family shelters, I have no issue, especially, uh, small, small.
Small ones.
Small ones, I have no issue them being anywhere in the city.
Yeah, I don't either, but, but not anything.
Right, so including the, including the down, including the, the island, right? When we're talking about large, I certainly agree that, well, then they should go where large buildings are already, right? Where large facilities are.
What about for like, small and medium shelters, excluding them from industrial zoning? I, I feel like that is an important restriction perhaps for the quality of the residents. And like, you know, a roof over your head is better than nothing at all.
Again, that's gonna be dictated by the, the provider to determine what is gonna be best for their, um, what's gonna be best for who they're servicing. If I'm homeless and the only place that's.
It's a converted warehouse.
Is gonna provide me a, 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 a night or a couple of days for me and my kids, and it's in a warehouse in the, in the, in the, you know.
Off of like Alfred Pullard Parkway?
Alfred Pullard Parkway, I don't care, I just, you know, I'm just looking for a place to keep my kids warm until I can find a place, right?
Fair enough, fair enough, fair enough.
You know.
So, the only, the only thing I don't, I, I agree with is when it comes to a non-family, non-child, basically, single adult, unrelated adults or, um, that we limit that. That you just say, okay, well, for all those other types of shelters, basically wherever the res- residential or whatever the zoning allows for in terms of size and residence, we just go with. Uh, but when it comes to single adults, then we say, well, no, we don't want you in any residential areas because you're more likely, or your residents are more likely to have mental health problems, drug problems, crime problems, that type of thing. And they're more likely to, uh, you know, wander around aimlessly, beg for money.
Are there any zones?
Basically, it's gonna be downtown.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying for zoning, limit, limit.
Yeah.
But are there, are there any zones, like, we have a resource extraction zone, don't we? Like, I'm just wondering, like, are there, and I get the concern of like, you know, if you, you want a roof over your head, I get that. But I think there is some guidance that we should provide.
Resource conservation, you mean, like, along the riverfront and stuff like that?
I'm trying to, you know, I don't have the zones memorized, right? But like, are there any places where we would not want a service provider, even if it's their, even if they have good intentions, not to put a family shelter? Is there a place where we don't want people living, uh, just because the provider thinks that good and maybe someone's desperate enough to be in that situation? Is there, is there a, a place where that doesn't make sense?
No, so.
Riverfront is the basic one.
But why?
Because it's, it's a downtown area provided, uh, amusement, it's a park area, you don't want people living down there.
But we, we want families living down there, we wanna build housing down there.
So the Continental Mill is there and we're gonna have over four hundred apartments there.
So, yeah, we do want families down there.
But that doesn't mean that a shelter is appropriate necessarily, but Riverfront does allow multifamily. The only zoning district that doesn't allow residential is industrial and we don't have a very large amount of industrial in the city. The next would be urban enterprise, that allows light industrial and industrial, but it still allows residential uses. So, um, we allow residential everywhere, but that one district, the industrial.
So, could we just say like anywhere that residential is allowed?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, cool. That's what I was trying to flesh out there.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Madam Chair, can we get some clarification, um, general consensus, straw poll, whatever you wanna call it? You, you guys had talked about small, medium, large shelters, and then we jumped to family, family shelters with children. And I think the question was brought up, do we want all sizes of shelters, even if they're families in the residential areas? Did I, did I hear that or not? I'm just gonna make sure we have consensus for staff to bring our, to take back with our notes. So are you saying just small?
Small and, or medium.
Smaller, medium, so basically sixteen or under.
Sixteen or under.
Could be anywhere in residential areas.
In a residential area.
Not what I heard. That, that's not the assumption that I'm.
Is that, that, okay, so Roger, is that what you heard? Mark?
That's what I, that's what I would.
That's what yours, um, um, Mike?
Not necessarily what I heard, but that's where I'm going.
Okay, Amy? And Pentia?
Could I, could I just explain where I'm coming with this? Because I think I heard this from some people, but maybe I, I misinterpret it. Like, would you want a sixteen-bed family shelter, uh, in a single-family zoned space? I feel like I heard some.
No, I mean, it's according to, according to the zoning. So it, it, you know, if NCA, if it's only residential, it's only single families, then you wouldn't put sixteen people.
So you'd only have small then, that's not what we just talked about.
Can I clarify that we don't really have single-family zoning anymore in Lewiston?
Oh, that's true, because of, because of two thousand and one, right?
So we allow, um, you know, ADUs everywhere. So anyone that has a single family can have a second unit as an ADU. If they have enough lot size or frontage, they can have a two-unit. If they're an existing, um, single-family home, they can add up to two. If it's a vacant lot, they can build up to two or up to four, depending upon if they're in the growth overlay. So really, in practice, single-family zoning is not what it used to be.
Isn't existing what it used to be, okay.
It's more of a two or a three-unit residential zoning.
Right.
Is kind of where we're gonna be in the future, maybe it's not how it feels and looks today.
But chances are, but you could have sixteen people in three units. Very easily, very easily, so.
Yeah, but could you have twenty?
Yeah, yeah, you probably can.
Twenty people in three units?
Well, they, well.
I mean legally, you could.
You could, because, you know, I mean.
We don't limit.
And this sounds discriminatory, but, but the Salamalees have large families, or like when my family came from Canada. You know, they had thirteen kids.
Forty people in three units?
Well, no, I mean.
Well, I mean, there, so there is, there is logically a limit, right?
Right, right, well, that's what we're saying is that the.
Depending on how fat they are, they can only fit so many in a unit, right?
But, yeah, but that's what we're saying, smaller.
So there's logically a limit, right?
But we're, that's what we're saying, small and medium.
I, I mean, although I will say like an ADU is limited to two bedrooms, but a two-unit doesn't have a limit necessarily in size. So you could have two six-bedroom units that have twelve people in each, I mean, very easily, someone could design that. Could they make it a, you know, fifteen-bedroom and have a twenty-five-person family? I don't, I don't think there's anything in building code that's gonna prevent that.
But isn't that all solved by simply saying sixteen or fewer?
Yeah, that's, that's what, yes, sixteen or fewer.
And you guys, you guys defined the definitions first, right? So we, you guys already came to a consensus that a small is ten or fewer, medium is sixteen or less.
Right.
And a large is, is greater than sixteen. So that's been established, so now the question is, are you all okay with family shelters of sixteen occupants or less being in any zone that's, that supports residential?
Yes, I, does that, does that, okay, does that make sense to everybody?
I was only bringing it up because of your objection around single family.
Right.
Can I ask another clarification?
Yeah, yeah.
Is family synonymous with youth, so we're talking about both when we're saying this? Like, single youths versus family, like that, you're saying that they're treating those the same or different?
No, I'm saying, the age of youth is what, twenty-one or under? Twenty-one or younger.
Yeah.
They're youth.
They're youth, yeah, yeah.
And they're most likely going to school.
Right.
Right, they're homeless schoolchildren.
Right, right, so.
I think again, it would be, I, as long, I, I don't know how this fits, but, um, in zoning, but, uh, daytime programming for a youth shelter would be really important. In Portland, they have a, uh, a youth shelter where they have to leave at eight in the morning and they can come back at nighttime after dinner. So that would be the only distinction that I would think in a residential neighborhood would be undesirable.
The, I wonder about, because we talk about impact of people coming and going. And sixteen youth, you know, these are all individual people, right? And they may not come or go as frequently as an adult would because if they're under, you know, eighteen, like, having that mobility might be a little different, right? But I, I'm just putting this out here as a little thought experiment or whatever, you know, do, do we wanna think about medium as a little bit different here? You know, again, talking about impact, you know, uh, let's say the shelter has a bunch of people who are between eighteen and twenty-one. You know, it, that's a similar experience to like, a, a very, very small dorm at Bates, you know? Does, does that make a difference for us at all? That's all I'm throwing out there, you know, like, let's, let's pick it apart. I mean, my sentiment is that like, kids tend to fit in places that you have families and a lot of places that you have residential have families, so it's all good. But, um, I would imagine that once you get above ten kids, ten youth, that that can maybe change the dynamic. And I, I would maybe say, let's put a pin in this, and I'm curious how many beds, like New Beginnings has in my mind.
They was more than ten.
It's more than ten.
It's twelve, it's twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, it's twelve.
It's twelve.
Okay, but that's not much more than ten. Do, are you, with any concerns from people?
I, I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Mark?
I don't have any concerns.
Yeah, Michael?
I, I, I'm just thinking of, uh, certain neighborhoods and the impact and, um, we're, we're looking at, um, homeless families and youth synonymously and as well-behaved and, um, all around. All my life, I've been around sixteen to twenty-one-year-olds that are not the best behaved, family included. I'd say extended family, because I don't have much, I don't have much immediate family, but extended family. And, um, so that could be problematic and, as this discussion is taking shape, I hear sixteen or less. And, and I'm imagining something, and I'll use as the example of Mitchell Street in light of the fact that, you know, those residents came to talk to us about, you know, the issues surrounding the Ramada Inn at one point. A parcel along there, either not much undeveloped, but, um, somebody purchases, a nonprofit comes in and purchases a parcel and can put up a, a duplex, a matter of right, uh, like two units, not a type deal. That could be a huge impact on that neighborhood, uh, and that would be a concern.
Well, it could be a huge impact if it's just a duplex and they rent it to, you know, to own a home, owner and, and rents it out. I mean, it could rent it out to a large family.
But we're not likely to have all the way up to sixteen people in a typical duplex. So you might have a family of five, uh, and even if it was two families of five on each side of the duplex. And, um, I, I actually know one that, uh, lived up till recently off of Farwell Street in a duplex. And it was a family of five and I think owner occupied next door. Total probably didn't exceed ten, but.
So, so do we wanna put limit on, on a you, on a youth shelter?
On a medium youth shelter.
On a medium youth shelter?
Me personally, I, I don't, but I, I have no.
No, I, I'm asking, I'm just trying to get a consensus for, for, for staff.
Right.
You're saying no.
I, I don't care.
Roger?
I'd limit it to ten.
Okay, Mike?
That's where I'm going, ten.
Okay, uh, Pentia?
Uh, I would go slightly higher than ten for a medium youth shelter. I think twelve to fifteen would be appropriate.
So that's redefining the definitions a little bit.
What's that?
Are you thinking redefining the definitions or allowing?
It's ten, it's ten or sixteen. That, those, because that's what we've been working with, the, the numbers.
Between ten and sixteen?
Would be medium.
Ten, ten or less is.
I'm fine.
And sixteen or less is, is medium. Yes, okay.
I'm fine with medium being everywhere.
Alex?
That works for me.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Because the other, just the other dynamic with a youth shelter, as I understand it, is by definition, it's not like just sixteen kids on their own. There's an adult on the property.
Right, yeah, 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 okay.
Lord of the flies, yeah.
Right, right, it's not, it's not a, on an animal house. Okay, so now we're into.
Large.
Large shelters, um, you know, transient.
Of any kind, right?
Of any kind, so do we wanna do what we were talking about earlier? Basically define that there are two types. There is the type, one, that people, it's more or less of a warming shelter, they spend the night. They, they get, they come in around five o'clock, they have dinner, they spend the night, they have breakfast and then they get out, they gotta get out. Or are due, and is, that's one. And then the other one is a twenty-four hour shelter where, uh, the residents can stay all day long and they have services available.
I think that split happens over all the different sizes and all the different types. I think what we were just talking about, at least in my mind, was family shelters and youth shelters that provide twenty-four hour service. We were not talking about family shelters or youth shelters that do not provide that.
Correct.
Right?
That's right.
Right.
I think, in my mind, we should finish up family shelters and youth shelters that provide twenty-four-hour service that are large. And, and just talk to see if we wanna have any restrictions there. I think, for me at least, I think I'd wanna think about density. I think that's starting to get out of the realm of being okay to put in a residential neighborhood or in a rural place. You know, that's something where you have enough people that, yeah, being closer to services and therefore being in certain zones just makes more sense, right?
Also not disrupting the neighborhood.
Yeah, you know, like, you know-
Cause it's already got-
I have some property out on the Green Town Line. I don't think it would be great for anyone to have a, you know, more than sixteen-bed, uh, family shelter out there. It would be really hard for the residents and it just doesn't seem like a great fit, you know?
Right, yeah, so, so the large family shelter would-
Large youth shelter.
And family and youth shelter.
Where are places that are down that?
Where are places, you know, because of density, we really, and, and proximity to services, that's, that's the other one. If it's too far out-
Downtown district and, uh, you know, Centreville and-
In, in the, in the, um, overlay area, more or less.
Well, no, cause there's a lot more than that.
No, not, 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 I, I, for me, the overlay doesn't-
Yeah, no, no, I'm just using that as a general area, not-
I would say anywhere between, you know.
What are, what are the zones that we have, like, right on the edge of town? On the, on the borders, as you start to go out towards Green or out towards Lisbon?
That's usually rural agriculture.
So those are zones that I, I don't think we'd wanna necessarily put-
Right, right.
Uh, show if you zoom, if you scroll back up, um, no.
The other way.
Back where I was.
Yeah, so the highlighted portion, the green highlighted portion already seems to me, uh, zoom out.
Too close.
Zoom out a little bit.
So that's the existing overlay district.
Right.
This one right here, this, this whole district here, that was just highlighted, seems, seems about right, right?
Oh, you mean where the design district, the brown?
Yeah, which you already had, maybe including this area here, but basically this area.
Right.
Anything outside of that area, maybe this area here, but, you know, really outside of this area, you wouldn't really want any-
Yeah, we can expand it out to Campus Avenue and then, and then down in the lower area.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, behind Central Main Med, that's an area that's not included on here.
Yeah.
That could be okay.
So basically from, uh, you know, Russell southwest, all the way down, uh, to, Russell, where's Russell?
But, but then it's not, I mean, but how different is that from-
From Russell and Maine, from Russell and Maine, all, all this, you don't include any of the-
And go over like as far as college or?
Well, I was thinking from Russell and Maine all the way down here and then, um, the neighborhoods inside, just outside of Bates's properties.
Expand it out to Campus Avenue and then down-
Yeah, campus.
Go campus, but not college, you're saying, you're saying, keep with the existing kind of bottom.
I, I still, like, my gut's still telling me that if we're gonna provide limits to this or we're gonna have a limit to this, I think doing it by zoning, by the type of use that's in that area makes a lot more sense to me. And, and, you know, I think the idea there is that, like, fundamentally, this is housing people. And so places that we house people in this way, this type of use could probably fit in okay in certain circumstances. And like, again, you know, if, if we're talking family shelter and youth shelter, you know, that, I think limiting it based on where there's services, that's, again, getting into sort of the operational business of the folks running the facility, right? You know, maybe it is out, further out. And they provide to do transportation services, or there's gonna be a school in the side, I don't know. Making stuff up here. But to me, like, u- usage, existing usage and density are sort of the two defining characteristics that we should be looking at, and that's not necessarily tied to geography.
It would be interesting to see a map with the zones with these things in it and see how close it is, like, how big that actually is. Cause I don't have a good feel for, right? So if we, if we add these uses to six zo- six zones, I don't know, I don't have an idea of how big that gets. You know what I'm saying?
I do, it's a hard map to create, cause we're talking about different, um, right now, we've got small and medium youth and family shelters that are twenty-four hours, which would be certain zoning districts, like, basically everything but the industrial, if I'm understanding correctly. Um, and then we'd have the, um, large family shelters, still twenty-four hours, that would be like downtown residential, maybe NCB, um, you know, maybe Centreville or Neighborhood Business, those sorts of zoning districts. And then we're still gonna have small or medium, um, shelters that are family, but not twenty-four hours, large ones that aren't twenty-four hours. Then we're gonna have adult home, or small, medium and large. So, in some ways, it's almost easier for staff if we continue the process of saying, okay, you know, this is gonna be a little less residential than this. This one's gonna be a little less residential than that. And maybe let us go through and say, okay.
Okay.
We think that this is appropriate for the DR, the CV, the this.
Okay, why don't, why don't we leave, we leave the, the-
We can bring that back to you in kind of whatever form that is.
Yeah, let's, let's leave those, the, the details to staff. And then, you, you have heard what we, uh, our intentions are and, and you guys know the, the zones and stuff. And then you can come back and, and, uh, let us know what you guys feel is, is inappropriate, you know?
Yeah, we'll make a suggestion and you guys can tweak that.
I mean, we don't want it in, in the, uh, agricultural zone, uh, you know, as well as industrial, you know, those kinds of, of zone, you, you know, uh, you don't want them in the floodplain, although, uh, Tall Pines is in it, but anyways, um, yeah, so let's, let's leave them and let's, we can refine it once they come up with some, uh, some good ideas for us so that we can move on. It is-
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, if we're, you know, and we haven't talked about, uh, you know, shell, regular shelters. So we, we need to move on.
Understood. Um, for non-twenty-four-hour shelters, can we just talk about buffer? Cause I think buffers will play a big part in that. And can we just give some flavor to staff before we move on?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I think, you know, part of the reason we talk about buffers, buffers from schools, buffers from parks, is cause of loitering issues, right? And so I think having staff come up with either a unified buffer for all of those situations for non-twenty-four-hour shelters would be good. Or, I don't know if other people on the board have opinions on this of, you know, well, if it's a, if it's, if it's a youth shelter or if it's a family shelter and it's not twenty-four-hour, we're okay with those being near parks. Like, I don't know, I'm just, I'm making stuff up here, trying to get some conversation going on this one.
We've already got the buffers up there, why don't we leave them the way they are?
I agree.
Yeah, just leave the buffers the way they are.
My thinking is-
No, there's only one buffer today, which is, um, in licensing. And I'm trying to remember, I think it's daycares and schools, two hundred and fifty feet. That's the current in the licensing side, which I think they were keeping that? Does that sound familiar, John?
I believe they were keeping it.
Yeah.
But there, there was talk of, of getting rid of it.
So my thinking for non, uh, for-
Non-twenty-four hours.
Non-twenty-four hour, any size, any use, meaning family, non-family, adult, would be the same districts that are selected for the large family and child youth area. Same districts, but the buffers included, all those buffers, the school, the parks, or whatever. Cause that'll just really just say, okay, well, it's in this same district as the large, but specifically for these ones where people are gonna be milling about afterwards, right? During the day, then you can't be in, within these, these areas either. Now, that severely limits where shelters are gonna be placed, but, you know?
Yeah, but that's, that's what it is.
Those are the types of shelters that are gonna be-
Okay.
I would, if it doesn't make it too complicated, I would say, can we get an option for family shelters and youth shelters to be permitted to be close to parks and close to schools? Cause I could, I could see, you know, if a, a shelter lets kids out during the school day and they're at school, so it's like they're not, well, you know, in theory, they're not, you know, loitering around, right? Like, there's things to do. Or like, you know, if there's a bunch of families that are having a tough time and they can spend the day in the park with the kids or walking around town with the kids, like, that feels better than just, you know, uh, single, single adults loitering in the park. That's a different flavor.
I think the true twelve-hour programs are you're discharged in the morning, you have to get back by a certain time at night and, and get there before the beds fill up, which is different than kids being in a shelter and they go to school during the day. They're still in that program for the duration of that time. So there's, that, I mean, I think there's, that makes a distinction between-
Right.
There's still a twenty-four-hour program, even though you might be off-site for-
Even though they're, they're not in, in the building all twenty-four hours, yeah.
Or school or, um, an outing, whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Even with that, if there was a family warming shelter, I would be okay with that being next to a school or a playground or a park.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that's a fine exception, because, you know, if that's the level of service they can provide, at least that's, that's a family-friendly place to be.
Yeah, okay. All right, so you guys have enough for families and youths, so-
Do we have consensus on that one? Deputy Director Norton, do you, are you good with what was just talked about? I was a little confused, I just wanna make sure, cause they're taking all the notes. Just for the, for the options, you know-
Good question. So it sounds like for, um, small, medium, so it sounds like it's a twenty-four-hour program and it's, um, families and youth, then depending on size, it's allowed everywhere. Large is allowed in a more restricted area. They don't have any buffer requirements from schools or daycares or parks. It sounds like they also don't have any from corridors, um, and maybe not from the Riverfront District, although we haven't talked about that district specifically. Then when we get to, um, non-youth and, um, family facilities-
No, we're talking still families and youth, non-twenty-four hours.
Non-twenty-four hours, but, but as far as buffers go.
Yeah.
We're, the buffers are, it's kind of apply the same whether it's a twenty-four hour or not for families and youth. Um, and then when we get to non-families and youth, regardless of whether it's twenty-four hour or not, we're going to have some kind of a buffer from, um, schools, daycares and parks. We haven't talked about any-
I don't think we've talked about, I think right now-
No, we haven't talked about any-
The clarification that I wanna make sure we have crystal clear is, small and large, twenty-four hours, we, we, we've got that already, we, we, we beat that one. Yeah, I think you got the, the large family and youth, fewer parameters.
Right.
And then those are all the twenty-four hours.
Right.
What I wanna make sure that we're cr- crystal clear on is the non-twenty-four hours of the same shelters. Family and youth, both small, medium and large.
Right.
So, now we're talking about family and youth, non-twenty-four hours. I know Alex had a few, you know, questions on it, and then I, I saw some head nods and, and some shakes from some of the others. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on what you guys are wanting us to come back with.
I think we still said no buffers.
No buffers on all of those.
Right.
I think was-
And youth, non-twenty-four hours, still no buffers.
Because we still want them to, you know, they may want to be in, you know, a park or, yeah.
But within the limited district, the same limited district that the large-
You wanna talk in your mic, my, uh, Mark?
I'm sorry, but-
That's okay.
But limited within the same district that the large, um, sh- twenty-four-hour shelters are.
Right.
So the non-twenty-four-hour shelters are limited to the same area or same zones that the large twenty-four-hour shelters are.
The highest-impact twenty-four-hour shelters.
So, so small and medium family and youth shelters that are non-twenty-four hours are not eligible to go into the, the, the neighborhood districts.
Correct.
Even with buffers.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Are we clear now, or I think she might have some more questions?
We're clear, but something we haven't talked about, we've talked about like a, a buffer from daycare, you know, the things we've talked about.
Schools.
We haven't talked about, um, setbacks from a residential use. So another way that we can provide a buffer is for some of those facilities that have larger numbers of people, we could provide requirements for setbacks from the neighbors. So if the district normally has a ten-foot setback, maybe you have to be setback twenty, or maybe there needs to be a, a fence or something like that. I mean, maybe you wanna kind of have that at a separate discussion.
Maybe a separate discussion. I think that, uh, I, I don't see putting, you know, that kind of restrictions on, on the pro- those, those properties for families and-
Do we have different setbacks for apartment buildings versus single-family?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like if an apartment building, I mean, you don't require them to necessarily have a, a fence or, or stuff, I, I mean, I don't, I don't see.
No, actually, for apartments, we do have, um, some requirements for-
Oh, there are setbacks and requirements, but, but-
But, but for buffers, there are some buffer requirements.
Right, but we could have the same kind of buffers for a regular apartment building.
Yeah, I would say have the buffers and setbacks match the residential, if similar.
Yeah, match the rest of the, the area. Okay, all right, so now we're talking, um, shelters for adults. And so there are, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we've got the twenty-four hour and then we've got the non-twenty-four hour where they're, they're there from dinner to breakfast and then they're out on the streets from eight to five. So, let's, let's do a twenty-four hour.
Ma- Madam Chair, can we follow the same methodology that we use for the others? We started with small.
Okay.
And then we went to medium, and then we went to large.
Small, medium and large, okay.
And then we went to twenty-four hour versus non-twenty-four hour.
All right, so, so small, medium-
Do we follow that same methodology that we did for the families and youth?
So, small, medium and large, so we have, okay, so what do, what are your thoughts, people, on restrictions for small?
Small adult shelters that are twenty-four.
Small adult shelters.
That are twenty-four hours.
That are twenty-four hours.
My, mine is, personally, regardless of whether they're twenty-four hour or not twenty-four hour, all adult shelters would be limited to the same district as that, as where the large twenty-four-hour family shelters would be, but they have the buffers in place. That's, that's, and that's how I would deal with it.
That's-
Adults are always, no matter whether you're small, medium or large.
More restricted.
You're always within that, with it, that more restricted downtown-ish area.
Yeah.
And you have the buffers.
In addition.
From, right.
Okay.
That's, that's my thing.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed, I, I, I like that.
Yeah.
Anybody else, comments, uh?
I think-
Pentia?
I generally agree, and I, there's something that's sort of bugging me about it too at the same time for having, I mean, having worked in social services before and seeing people, a single person who's stuck, and the shelter options are frightening. So, I, there's that piece of it that I, I just am not sure how to resolve. But I appreciate the thought behind what you're saying.
I think if we're willing to entertain conditional use, I think having a wider area for small adult shelters could open, cause like Shannon brings this up when we have these conversations. What happens if that shelter is specialized for like domestic violence? Um, you know, folks fleeing domestic violence, other, you know, sort of specialized situations like that. I think we would treat that differently, um, cause they may not have the same behavioral issues. And I think that's, in my mind, where a conditional permitting process could really help out. I think for small and maybe even for medium adult twenty-four-hour shelters, we could open up that area to be conditionally approved. Maybe it would be more, more commercial, you know, more areas that we allow commercial activity in addition to residential activity. Yes, it is perhaps further away from services, but again, that's sort of a programming thing. And I think opening the door, uh, for at least a proposal to come across our desk and us to say this is not a good fit for the city feels like more of a win feels like more of a win than having, you know, a very rigid, secure rule that, that sort of makes it, you know, ironclad from the get-go.
So you're saying, if I, if I understand you correctly, you're saying for small and medium-sized, uh, single adult or, yeah, adult homeless shelters, the general rule is going to stay in place except those are allowable for conditions that we can, conditional use that we can vote on, on a as come, as needed basis.
I think, yeah, how I, what I'm thinking for my proposal, definitely small, still haven't really thought through what medium could mean. But for small twenty-four hour adult shelters, having those, uh, be allowed in zoning that supports residential and commercial, that's my proposal.
Oh.
So, so it could be, it could be on like a commercial corridor or like, I think of, um, you know, some of the buildings on like Sabada Street.
Yeah, I get that, but I, I think for me, I, I wouldn't vote for that. I wouldn't support that. I would support the zone be restrictive and then for the individual development, for them to say, well, yes, we, we know that we would normally, because we're a small adult, you know, place, we would have to be within this district and within this buffer zone, but we're asking for a conditional, uh, use or we're asking for a waiver for, 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 because we're going to be housing domestic violence victims.
Yeah, I think naming the districts where it can be conditional is what I'm looking for.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm, we're ta- saying the same thing. I think I, just making explicit, you know, conditionally, uh, approved in, um, you know, neighborhood business, in highway business.
Couldn't we do that?
Outside of, outside of these zones, within this zone, approved by ro- or right, you know.
Couldn't we do that as part of the, as part of the, um, you know, the consideration of the board? Meaning, I'm a shelter that's going to house eight people, meaning not put it in, in the allowable con- conditional uses, right? The allowable conditional uses, this district, this district, this district or this buffer. Just simply allow the board to decide that, meaning it could be anywhere in the city if the board decides.
I'd love to see language from staff that sort of, because I think, I think you and I have the same sentiment here and I think let's let you come up with the mechanism that makes the most sense.
So the, the challenge is that right now, the way our ordinance is structured, we have use tables and something is either permitted by right or requires a conditional use permit or it's not allowed. And so it's not that we get to learn about what type of retail store that is and decide if it's appropriate in that zoning district or not. It's only if it's allowed by conditional use that then it actually is allowed to come forward for approval. So what we would be looking for, um, in this conversation or a future one, and at the last conversation, we did have some discussion about this, was right now, today, in the ordinance, shelters, any z- district that they're allowed in, it's only by conditional use permit. So I think the board discussed last time, continuing to require a conditional use permit for all shelters. Now, we haven't discussed tonight whether you still want to do that, whether like a twenty-four hour small youth or family feels like something permitted by right, which wouldn't require the conditional use review and criteria. You know, you're, maybe we're not at that conversation yet because we want to get the conditional use criteria a little more gelled. Um, so that's part of the discussion for sure, yeah.
And, and, and I think people are, okay, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, um, yeah, AWAP, I don't know what they're called now, but they're not coming before the city and getting a permit to have a, um, a, a shelter for battered women. I mean, because they keep this stuff hidden. I mean, it's, this is not public knowledge. This is, you know, for, for, for abuse, abuse and stuff. I mean, I, I don't think that we should include that as part of our definition for, uh, you know, a single person or, because we're going to cause some, some issues for those groups that are helping, uh, battered women or, and, and families to get away because right now, I don't think that they're coming before, you know, isn't it more like, um, uh, the, the John F. Murphy Homes? I mean, they, it's eight by, by right or whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I'm unfamiliar with this one. I, I apologize. I, I don't know.
You know, I, I mean, so am I, but I'm just saying that I, I, you know, I don't think that this is something that we should not require of, you know, that, 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 uh, that, that caudary of people because we're going to cause some problems.
I think, I, just to be clear, I don't think, uh, my intention is not to say that we should have something in the code that requires you to tell us what type of shelter you're going to be operating. I think if you plan on being outside of a pre-approved district area, but it's still within a commercial zone, we'd, uh, and this was with the assumption in my mind that we would actually have a district where it is permitted by right and not necessarily conditional use every single time. I, um, you know, this is something that I sort of learned because of planning being the family business. My father's a city planner. Is that often when you require everything to be conditional use, it can be kind of perceived as a popularity context? Like there, there are procedural issues that can arise from that. If you just say, every time you want to do something, you have to talk to me, right? That usually has a chilling effect on development. And so I think there is some advantage to saying, here's places where we're okay with these things. Or like even just indicating in some way, you are most likely to succeed in asking for conditional use in this area, right? Like whatever it may be, providing that. But I think providing a mechanism for if you're going to operate a specialized type of shelter that isn't going to have the same impact, you know, as something that fits it, something else that fits in that broad category, just providing a little pressure relief valve for smaller places, right? I think that could make a difference with some, some development. That, that's all I'm looking for. So not saying conditional use, you know, you have to tell us if it's going to be a domestic violence shelter, but saying, uh, if you, you know, if you think that you want to be outside the zone and you think you can prove that it won't impact the neighborhood, we'll consider it in these zones for conditional use as opposed to by right in these other uses. Or, you know, or as opposed to this is the area that we're really encouraging, but you know, you can try your luck other places. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but the thing is, is that you can grant them the, that particular thing in the neighborhood and all of a sudden the things switch and that domestic violence goes around the neighborhood, what happens then?
So, so you mean?
In other words, by having a conditional use, you're dict- dictating to us, that's what you're going to be doing is having a shelter for abusive people, right? Then we can determine whether or not that area is ideal for that type of thing or you should go to another area.
Yeah, but. This is for survivors of domestic violence, not abusers.
Right, but I mean.
Not the abusers. The victim's not the.
It's the victims, not the abusers. Yes, absolutely, but that's the problem. If we're starting to, to put this into any kind of context, I mean, this is where, you know, we're going to have some problems. Let's, let's leave domestic abuse out of any language that we're talking about. We're talking about single individuals and that's generally not domestic violence. They usually have, I mean, th- there are just women, but I mean, there are, but, but let's not talk about.
Yes.
That because it, it's, we're going to cause some problems.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm, just, just so I can follow up on this. That's what I'm saying. Um, I think what I'm asking for is that we have a mechanism for smaller twenty-four hour adult shelters to be outside of a pre-prescribed area. Have that be treated slightly different than a medium or a large shelter. That's what I'm asking for. If the board thinks that they should all be treated the same way, that's fine too. But I'm proposing, and I'm using domestic violence as an example, of a smaller twenty-four hour adult shelter that would be different. You know, is there a way that we can provide a pathway for that type of shelter? If, if people don't think that there's value in that, I, I hear that.
Mike?
Uh, the whole process through, I'm thinking, okay, homeless shelters, adults, uh, now you've got, uh, the ones that have behavioral problems, the one that has, uh, drug abuse problems. At no time was I thinking of specialized groups such as, uh, abused women. Uh, and I'm curious about Sophia House and where that falls into place. It's probably more like a group home and wouldn't really be considered a shelter, uh, and by definition. It's not somebody that just comes there because they're not looking for shelter, uh, for a night, thirty days, ninety days, whatever. They're there for a specific reason for the services that are being provided and it's probably totally outside of what we're discussing.
Probably closer to John Murphy Homes than.
Yeah, yeah.
Than, than what we're talking about. Okay, so let's get back on shelters. So small, medium and large, do we want to restrict? Do we want to, small? I, I personally don't want to see a shelter that could, you know, i- in the residential areas.
For adults.
For adults.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I, I think that we, this is the part where we need to, whether it's twenty-four hours or not, that's where we need to put buffers and, um, and restrictions. Whether it be a, an overlay or whatever, but I, that's where, in my, that, that's my opinion. So what kind of, of restrictions are we, um, are we talking about?
Well, like I said, the same district, the downtown district that's going to be for the large and tho- all of those buffers.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Roger, how do you feel about that?
I agree.
Okay, Michael?
I understand Mr. Roy correctly. I agree.
Okay. Penthea?
For twenty-four hour?
For any.
Small?
For any.
All right, small, medium or large people, uh, just homeless people.
Homeless adults.
Homeless adults.
But, but then there's two classifications.
Right, yeah, but right now we're, we're just every, all of them and then we'll, we'll break it down.
So it's a matrix of six, not just three.
Yeah.
Right.
I was appreciating what Alex was bringing with the idea of, um, uh, in this area with the potential for maybe some other areas having a conditional application, uh, for small. Um, to me, that makes a lot of sense that that might fit, but they would, uh, uh, they would have to meet some conditions for that, um, to work for the city. So that would be, I'm, I'm on board with that and the rest.
Okay, Alex, we.
You already got Mike.
Okay, Amy?
Good, as long as it's conditional use, yep.
Okay, so.
Good with small ones being in a bit larger area than the medium and large ones, is that what you're saying? But it's, but all of them are conditional.
Everything's conditional, okay.
But didn't you say, I, I thought I heard you guys say, no adult shelters in residential areas. Is that what you guys said? Or did you say wi- in them, but with buffers?
I don't want them anywhere in residential.
Are you including?
They, we've got three people who say, yes, they, they would like them with conditions and we've got the rest of us saying that we don't want them in, in residential.
What, but define residential.
I heard what Alex said was different.
That's not, that's mischaracterizing what I said. I did not say residential areas. I said, commercial areas that also allow housing. So places that are a little more industrial or, you know, a little more commercial in character. So purely residential zones, I don't think that makes.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Purely residential zones.
Okay.
We just need to list those.
Okay.
Downtown resident, residential is not.
No, no, but I'm just saying purely residential, the outskirts of the, of town, uh, I, I don't think that they.
So we're talking like the ag, the suburban residential, low-density residential, medium-density residential, maybe NCA, that's where we're getting a, or, you know, where it's sort of.
Not in the NCA, you know, really.
But then maybe NCB, neighborhood business, downtown residential, San Taville Mill.
Right, as you get into, closer into town than, than we're going, correct? Okay.
Is that?
So then, okay, so, well, let's, let's go with that and then we can, once they've got some language and stuff, then we can refine, we can refine, okay, because it's getting late and, and we, we need to move on. So then, now we do the, the, um, twenty-four and let, not twenty-four.
I thought we covered everything.
Okay, so, so it's all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's it? So it's all, okay, you guys?
So the, so the single adults shelters, both small, medium and large, twenty-four hour, non-twenty-four hour are all treated identically. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, that's what they said? Okay? All right, anything else?
Question.
Sure.
Um, on the map, we had put together five hundred foot buffers for everything.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, right now in the licensing, it's two hundred and fifty feet for, um, schools and for daycares. Um, do people like the five hundred foot that you're seeing for all the different uses? Do you want it to be a different increment, different, based on different uses?
I, I think we should be consistent with licensing.
So drop it to two fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what, I, I'm fine with whatever you have.
That's five hundred, yeah.
Fine with that, but I'm also fine with two hundred and fifty. I do.
I, I'm, I'm just thinking that it would be easier if we were consistent.
Yeah.
If every, if we were using the same numbers for licensing and for zoning. Otherwise, it, you're, you're making it much more complicated.
Well, we, I think we should go back and look and, and see exactly what the council is doing because I think there was discussions, uh, amongst the council to take that out and just leave the good neighbor.
Okay, well, if they're not putting, if they don't have a buffer, you know, five hundred foot, then go back to the five hundred feet. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know if I really like the five hundred bu- foot buffer around the corridors. That feels a little excessive. I, I didn't get a chance to look at it in terms of how it like interfaces with a parcel. Um, but does that typically exceed the depth of a parcel on those? Like, is that, is that going to get into?
Most of the parcels are only, uh, like a hundred feet deep.
Thanks for answering the question, yeah. So that, that's what I'm wondering about.
I just want to come up and look at the.
I think that would be helpful.
Yep. Sure.
Can you hear them to take notes?
Okay, okay, we're, we're not voting on anything, so, but. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, or, or what I'm worried about is that in some denser areas, it's really pushing back into the block where there's like developable parcels and things like that, right? Um, you know, further out here, sure, you know.
Yeah, but it's not going to be further out there, right, because of the zones that we're selecting.
Yeah.
Right.
It'll just be down here.
So.
It'll just be just in the.
Yeah, so like, we're cutting off whole blocks.
Yeah, no, if we get rid of the corridor zones in this, in the, this downtown area and just go with these five hundred, um, foot zones.
Yeah, because then it opens up in here.
Everything except the yellow, except the corridors. Because I agree, that does start to really limit it.
Yeah.
So you're saying eliminate the five hundred foot?
No.
Or just make it smaller?
No, no, the same, the same that you have here except for the yellow, except for the corridor.
Just get rid of the corridors.
So no buffer for corridors?
Yeah, because you're already going to be limiting it based off of, uh, location. It's all going to be down here.
Yeah, when you add all this together, it's like very limited.
Yeah.
Right, that's right, which is the intent.
If that makes sense.
Does that?
And then we're doing five hundred for daycares and childcare from the center of the property and then five hundred.
Around the edge of the property, isn't it?
Yeah, like are we, are we treating, because I think on the map you said that there was sort of like.
So the schools on the property line, I believe the daycares are, it's just, this is.
Just boop, yeah, center pin.
And the parks should be, uh, probably, I don't know why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Craig?
Uh, schools are measuring property line, daycares measuring.
So we're eliminating the corridor buffers, we don't have them for anything. Um, and then keeping or having a five hundred foot buffer for parks, schools and daycares unless that conflicts with what's happening in licensing.
Okay, so what's the consensus?
We adjourned while you were out.
Yes, you're, you're getting ready to adjourn. No, the, I, I think the consensus was to eliminate the, um, buffers on corridors.
Okay.
And to have a five hundred foot buffer for daycare, schools and parks unless that conflicts with the licensing and whatever increment they're using, if they're using one.
Sounds like a plan to me. Okay. Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, hold those in favor.
Do we have to wait for Amy?
No, she's li- she's gone.
Oh, okay.
She had to leave.
Yeah, Amy had to leave, so we're all set. Okay. All right, so you guys have your marching orders? Yeah, Amy had to leave, so, we're all set, okay. All right, so you guys have your marching orders? Hopefully you guys will, you know, can come up with some stuff.
So is the plan for another workshop on the eighteenth, is that what?
The next one is the eighteen?
The question is, do you guys wanna continue with another workshop? Do you want staff to try to pull, I mean, I guess we're gonna pull together what we think we've heard you say anyway, whether it's a workshop, or whether it's a public hearing.
If, if we're gonna do a public hearing, then we would, we would request a December ninth, is it the date, I believe it's the ninth?
Yeah, because we'd have to, well, yeah, for, well, if it's just a public hearing without potential action and recommendation of council, then we have more flexibility for when it goes in the paper.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're gonna take action, then we need to know two weeks in advance, which would be for the eighteenth, that's tonight, we have to place a legal ad in the morning. So, we would probably be doing that on the ninth of December instead.
Yeah, I think probably hearing the ninth and, and the eighteenth give us.
Yeah.
Another workshop.
Another workshop, what about?
Can we promote that workshop in the way that we promote a public hearing? I mean, we have no legal requirement, but just like, put something in the paper. You know, Shannon brought up doing the workshop method so that we could get public input before we end up with a final proposal. And, but, you know, that's only as good as letting people know, right?
Yeah, I don't know how much people read the paper, but we did, with this workshop, it did go out on kind of social media a bit, but we can do that last again, if you wanna do a legal ad in the paper, we can certainly do that as well.
Yeah.
And would you, would the board be amenable to a, another workshop with?
With public comments, yeah.
With public comments.
Absolutely, yeah, because I think it, it'd be great if we had public comment before we get to the, you know, the public hearing, it makes it a lot easier. You know, like Mr. McCarthy, you know, he gave us his opinions, and it, it's helpful to help us without having to wait till that, that public hearing and, and trying to make changes at that point.
So the, the plan would be a, a public hearing with action on this item for the ninth?
For the ninth, right.
December, on that same day will be the other item for action that we had discussed, the, the no name pond overlay.
No name pond, okay, that's what I was trying to.
And the intermediate meeting, we just do another workshop?
Just do another, yeah.
To refine the, the language that, that you guys will have generated from all of our comments, and that way we can make any tweaking and whatever at that point, and then go from there, okay? Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, see you on the eighteenth.
We have, we have a new alarm system that we have to.
Oh, you gotta turn that off.
We have to arm the alarm system once you guys are all out of the building.
Okay, don't forget to turn off the, the recording.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay? Otherwise, we'll record forever.
I'll get the doors, if you wanna get the recording.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking for clarification, it's definitely, we are the cats that need to be heard.
I feel bad, I feel bad for showing you, Craig, I wanna make sure that, have the best tool of the workforce do a good job.